Better about. Welcome everyone to the township of Milburn Planning Ward Meeting. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter two thirty-one, public law nineteen seventy-five, please be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the Golden Board at Town Hall and serving officially designated newspapers a list of meeting dates annually, indicating that this meeting would take place at Milburn Board of Education Education Center Building at seven thirty P M on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. They have a roll call please.
Corey Biller. Allison Canfield. Michael Cohen. Jorge Master Petro. Deborah Neves. Frank Sacamandi. Michael Zion. Jonathan Baxter. Sergey Sivstov. Srini DJ. Chair Gaston Happer.
Again, thank you everybody for coming. We have a full agenda for the evening. We're going to try to get through everything as quickly as possible, so we definitely have time for applications towards the latter part of the session. First up, our approval of minutes from September third, we have a set of regular meeting minutes. Did everybody get a chance to review those? Any comments or questions? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for regular meeting minutes for September third, twenty twenty-five. Do you have a second? All in favor? All opposed? None, so motion passes unanimously.
Please note extension, Sarah.
And second set of meeting minutes is the executive session for September third, twenty twenty-five. Any comments or questions on those? Would like to make comment, I thought the the meeting minutes were great, I think they've been excellent. Since the get go, appreciate it, I appreciate it. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the executive session minutes for September third, twenty twenty-five. Do you have a second? Corey Biller. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
That's literally terrible mark extension.
Okay, next up, we have a memorialization of resolution or application twenty-five zero zero one. The major subdivision approval for lot, a two lot subdivision, Woodmont Properties and Kennedy at Milburn LLC at one eight five JFK Parkway, block five three oh two, lot five. Everybody have a chance to go over memorialization? Any questions or comments?
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, Oral or Board Professionals and the applicants, council and professionals went through it as well and their comments weren't corporate. So hopefully it's an accurate memorialization of the board's decision.
I guess, would anybody like to make a motion to adopt the memorialization?
I make the motion. Sarah, we, the motion is second, both of members were voted in the affirmative that evening. Thank you.
Roll call or just?
A roll call for the resolution.
Corey Biller.
Yes.
Michael Cohen. Jorge Master Petro.
Yes.
Deborah Neves.
Yes.
Frank Sacamandi.
Yes.
Michael Zion.
Yes.
Jonathan Baxter.
Yes.
Gaston Happer.
Yes.
Okay, next on our agenda is a, an executive session and I do appreciate everybody's patience in this matter. It is dealing with the High Center for Living Judaism litigation. We're gonna try to make it as brief as possible, be right back out. Again, please, thank you for your patience.
And Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'll abbreviate the resolution, that's of record for this executive session under the Open Public Meetings Act, in section twelve, V seven, for pending litigation with respect to the matter stated by the chair, the High Center for Living Judaism. As anticipated deliberations conducted in post session may be disclosed to the public upon determination of the board opinion that public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality and the resolution shall take effect immediately. We do need to ask with all resolutions, Mr. Chairman, a motion second and roll call vote.
I move.
Alright, roll call please, roll call vote please.
Corey Biller.
Yes.
Jorge Master Petro.
Yes.
Deborah Neves.
Yes.
Frank Sacamandi.
Yes.
Michael Zion.
Yes.
Jonathan Baxter.
Yes.
Sergey Sivstov, oh sorry. Srini DJ.
Yes.
And Chair Gaston.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, we'll be in a room briefly and we'll be back soon. Thank you.
Any estimate of five, ten, twenty minutes an hour?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, I'm really here to watch, not your camera, not being democracy, some other thing. Went off for like almost eighteen months where he constantly changed the application at the hearings. I said, don't you have to start from there? And then they approve a resolution, they don't have my appearance at one hearing. The hearing, first hearing, I set up, I go, I have some problems with the coverage ratios. Like if you add in, like the turnaround that you can do for the bar department.
Are you over covered?
Yeah. Went on for about eight months. But one thirty at night. Question, which course do you like the better one? Nicer too, and if you're not a great golfer, it's not, yeah, so the other, the other one is like, unless you're a long hitter, you go. And you need a caddy. Like you're sitting here, the hole's here. Putt here. Something. We have always had a ringer that the ball or miles. What's the beauty?
I don't play golf.
You have to do sometimes going up, golf visiting, pretty much. That especially when here, you have the old courses, you go to Texas County or Volta. The way they were designed, Mars County, you know, they're, they're, you go like in the Midwest, it's all flat, you know, I didn't, no, they're like a playing field, you're hitting up, like you did a hole, it's like, you know, there's an architectural beauty of, of the courses to travel. You know, cause sometimes when you, you have like the young, like summer intern pros and they say, we're coming. You have to go, try to get on courses, just to see architecture. That's pretty funny, twenty years, you get a lot of trees, they got to a point where they used to have a lot of trees. They say, well, it wasn't breathing. So because I can't tell you how many trees are there removed of various courses.
I hear the term microclimate one more time. Eighty years later, they don't look the same. And I think you saw a lot with, I call it farm. Where you have a lot of, in your old green heater tee box area comes back and like, you do a lot of that. Not a lot of both.
You know, there's cool things with history, they didn't have driving range. The course was like built, I'd say before nineteen twenty, it didn't have a course range, it had a little putting, you know, it's like this history. Then we need to get into the ethnicity and exclusions.
I, I, I know Caddyshack.
You know, cause I grew up in Springfield, you know. But if I had known, like when I was in high school, that your home course was Volta Troy, you tell me, kids that come from this area, say, go play on the golf team. You don't understand what courses you want to be playing in various tournaments.
They started a, a junior league. Us Volta Troy, Richwood, and you see, they're summer setting, but so these kids, you know, high school, and even young, junior high and high school kids, they're, they're playing, representing, they're playing all those. And they're all on their, they're all on their high school. You know, it's just great to see, it's great to see that, that the game is, it's repainting.
But my business used to be urban area, so we were wearing the law, the first team. And I remember like, and like the best tournaments we liked was like the one, I would ride with a high school, junior high kid and just bring them. Saying, this is what you're doing. Then one of the kids, riding the first team, you know, you were for.
That's great, that's a, that's a product. When they come back.
No, just the idea of etiquette. Troy, don't wear your clothes, you know, cause when you get to business. You just need to be on a course.
Before, before junior goes out in the spring, we do a nice little plan where there's some classroom work and then they walk in from a couple holders. Well, I mean, a lot of things they should do with the dumps, replacing, getting sticks and ball marks on the greens, raking bunkers, you know, things like that.
I mean, one good thing is that they now, it's not mandatory, so the, if the sword's better. It's interesting.
There was a girl at Pingree who was on the junior national team. I guess they won, right?
And then there's a girl who's on Milburn High School. I think she won like last year, like where in state.
Yeah, we, so we're, we're the home, home course for.
Some like doors and trucks. Yeah, I don't have family, I don't play golf. The money that you pay your younger brothers for us to go six times a year. I mean, cause Maplewood's a good place. I've been like, my family, Mike was.
My father.
This is just, you just have to record. There'll be no pressure, just, just whatever you need, you just have to go through.
Yeah, I, I. I just don't wanna skip too much, now some of it is mentioned in the reports, that's why I wanted to be here. I know it's a pain to go through each thing, but it's better to have it on.
Which office, which branch are you in? You're local, isn't Archit Reiner involved in this application? How old is the name? Oh, she, I bet you said what?
She's two months old.
Yeah, we had some fun in Summit.
I got to be there for one.
Oh, right, right, right. Yeah.
Interestingly enough, though, there was an attorney who spoke in opposition, Gil Orin. I don't know if you remember him, his wife. He actually just passed away. I think his wife was the one that was talking about the light, the light wasn't actually.
Yeah.
Like across the street.
Yeah.
It was. It was a street light.
Had I known what a fuck. Things you learn.
I don't know why they don't start these meetings. I get popped to the hall and stuff, but still.
I guess getting home from work, yeah. Especially Saturday.
Saturday is late, some people are eight o'clock.
Yeah, some do products, does they, does anyone work on their normal? Yeah, that's crazy.
That is crazy. I wish they were during the day, that much is so amazing.
I would be very helpful during the day where it's like, we had a couple of, so. And I have some meetings.
That would be so great. Like when I get home, I cannot go to sleep, no matter how wet, I still can't like.
Takes you about an hour.
Yeah, exactly, to kind of wind it down and relax.
If you go like, you test, you know, it takes about an hour.
Yeah.
Chill out.
Yeah, if I didn't go on at home right, like crazy note, like, what is happening?
I've been there.
Um, I just want some, it's not that bad, actually. I like to go home and have a smile, TV, have a dinner. Right, exactly, right, exactly. You know, like Bart was the opposite, Bart would always be like, let's go out to like a restaurant for dinner before the meeting, and I'm like, no. Absolutely not.
Yeah, he, we went out, for the clubhouse project, we went out to dinner a couple times, so. See Italian place right.
It, it was the Barco Polo, which is no longer there.
You can go there.
No, off the couches. Beer hands.
It's. You talk about Milburn, Milburn's a rural. Of course, people like the parking deck.
I just, I'm starting to eat out.
Similar sound, not too close.
We did the door back.
She's on the board. I saw a picture. Yeah.
It's good, he's on vacation, I don't know where he is. It's not another vacation. So he's definitely enjoying himself, which is good, yeah. He was in working yesterday, he's usually on Tuesday. Yeah, I was saying, he likes to get away from his wife. Can't be home Saturdays.
No, I guess not.
You kind of have something.
Yeah. And it could be her kicking up.
I, I think, yeah. I think that sounds about right.
Knowing her.
But it's good though, it keeps your mind. So hopefully it's more on the.
How are you?
Good, how you doing?
We're talking about our ventures in the High Center. My hearing's that one.
I have no comments.
Yeah.
It's different to be on this side.
Yeah. Now you're here on this side. That was an educational for a lot of town.
We finally got somewhat of a response from the O K.
We did, so that was, it's, it's a favorable response, but we'll see, you know, how long you process it. So.
With the engineer.
Yeah, they're looking on the plans, but they actually, they're doing one, right, so. And we said, we're working on the plans. And we share the plans when we're ready, so we see what extent are they doing. We're, um, addressing, so. Yeah, took a lot, it was a lot of poking.
You just want, you don't want to over, over poke the bear.
Right on the side where that accident.
Well, both sides.
Okay.
Yes, cause we've had a move, we've had cars come to, that's both sides.
People drive like mechanics.
My nights in the works, I come, I come on, Mars out. I'm impressed, they don't, you start slowing down. Turn on my blinker and I start slowing down. And I don't, you know, read about care, let them beat whatever they want to. When I first started, I didn't know better.
Whoever put the.
I would glance my rear mirror, it'd be like, don't come right at me. So, it's like, nope, sorry.
My parents lived on a turn, that was kind of like that, you come down a hill and then they're on the right hand side. And I learned, I had to put my blinker on like half a mile away, otherwise people would be like, right, right on top of you. And then, I mean, you must have had twenty, twenty-five accidents in front of, in front of their house over the years.
And the crazy thing with two planes, most of them, like.
Yeah, exactly.
Very, very rarely is there that much traffic where, where they, you know, they have to stay behind. And then again, just, you know, kind of, well, after I'd seen the turn. Most of them are going to the, to London, they're not going to Fitterman Way, they're coming back. So they get the, get out to some of the courts.
I hate driving anymore, it's just, but I'm dreading my daughter getting her license, that's it. Not something I'm going to do. Well, she'll get her permit next year, but even still, it's stressful.
Does she want an license?
She doesn't, actually. She doesn't want the stress, she doesn't want to worry about it.
My daughter lives in, she's lived in D C for ten years, she maintains her driver's license.
I mean, in the state age, even kids who were anywhere, they don't really, which is actually great, when somebody's drinking. Doing things that they're supposed to be doing.
And, and living in D C, the metro system.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Very easy, so. Yeah.
We were down there two years ago, we, we went all over the city, and I loved it, because you got the train with her, and it was really great.
I was gonna say, you.
Hey, I, I'm trying to, I'm literally changing the agenda, like, right, but I think that's why they didn't want to post this one, because. Need resolutions, and then it'll take five minutes, and there's supposed to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have the old. Yeah.
Oh, my God, yeah, oh my God, I got it, I never object, but I'm gonna be like, that's it, forget it.
So.
Yep.
Yeah. I, that would be some real. I get somewhere. I'm gonna need to come to me.
Something. Or maybe, or did, and somebody would kill by, yeah, just much of a.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, seventy-five percent.
Who did they kill by? I knew that they were looking.
Generally, by me, you can't, from admitting people that, uh, somebody on form recall.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
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 Left the business, joined the law firm. I, I saw that release that.
Okay.
I didn't want to tell no one.
I was.
Yes, it sounds like.
I mean, it, it comes on about.
I was sad to see Russell.
But that's.
Nice to work away from.
So nice to be in the industry, and also, I, what he was called through his.
Right, right, yeah, exactly.
He had a design, but it's heroes, uh, amazing, and we just didn't drink it all.
Yeah, exactly.
But, yeah.
We had, we had babies.
He lived far away, yeah.
It was, it was pretty, much near where, very good.
Yeah. Yes.
I didn't want to. It's too much looking at.
Yes.
Why wait?
Yeah, I don't know, I was like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We call it procedure. Killed every year, it was his first year.
It's also more.
Right, yeah.
At a four truck.
I have a question.
For a car actually, for a. And what was that, the best, the crash.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, that's why.
My son.
They would be.
Right, exactly.
Take out the ten months. So I dream, I think he's a living dad. You see that?
Yeah.
Probably died, I bet.
Oh, like they don't. So. Kind of fast, it can be. Yeah.
Right. First brand, especially on.
Right.
Because he has one of those new such that he could.
Right, and like, right, exactly, yeah.
First number, which is. They wanted to work for a company to handle it, so he has, he has, maybe he's already married, all of them, sure. Right, so. Then you shove that reverse card out, and it's, it's, uh, three ones, exactly, the bridge manager, I knew it.
Right.
About, like, four door. It was smaller, it's like, that'd be small. Uh, I think it's two years.
So it means business, yeah?
Yeah. They're still happy, so.
And we'll say it again, I, I hope that for Beacon Hill.
It shuts up.
Just be happy when the renovations are finished.
Well, so, you know, so. So they're building a carriage yet, so.
Carriage house and the Pat's house, like the hockey, you know, but it's tough, they're not gonna have it for the whole winter, which is gonna be very challenging.
We have talked about that.
They all like the hockey members that they've been. That's my crap, it's not, it's not allowed.
Those are people I know.
Yeah, exactly, my husband and all of my kids are the hockey. Okay. Yep. They like to keep them down, so you can shoot them.
It can.
And then, well, it's gonna be, because there are such changing rooms.
All right.
For the kids, yeah.
Yeah, there'd be also.
Yeah.
I didn't see that. Did you work with them?
No.
They did work.
A lot of, it was delayed for like two years, so I keep my decisions. Beacon Hill, it's not, I'm home right now.
Yeah, right, right across the. Just thinking.
Okay.
Yeah. It's pretty nice.
So this is.
Yeah.
This is Beacon Hill Club, and that's Beacon Hill Country.
They did, they filmed some of them.
They did, yeah.
Yeah, right.
There are a lot of them at Sittler's elbow that they did some of them.
Yeah, they, they had the, I would, my instruments. They had the cast calls or.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Sweet, sweet.
Right, with the one in Summit, that's.
They did very good. I guess that.
They have hoppers in them.
No, no, oh, gosh.
Yeah, they're one of the only places that have an outdoor.
I know Navis thinks.
Navis.
Exactly, yeah.
I don't, I don't.
Essex, Essex Sun Club.
Oh, that's right.
Essex, so, so hard.
Yeah.
And I think in Angkor, wouldn't they?
And I don't know, I don't know Beacon Hill, but I know Navis, right, so that price house, delete.
Yeah, I've got, I've got my.
Yeah, my brother-in-law, my brother-in-law is.
Beacon Hill does not. Beacon, say it loud, so, um, you guys can hear, but we are not, we are not, so. They have their own.
I remember when we went there, we went first, and what we did.
It's your future. Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, you went to Congress.
Oh.
We go to Congress, why? You want to call.
Three years. Since this, all the results.
Yeah. Peter only worked seven or eight straight.
And he does.
Yeah.
And he does.
In years, he left shortly after.
Yeah.
Just like you would be.
There's no.
That's my company that.
Yeah, that's the newest proposition, the proposition from.
Yeah. I got a problem with.
Oh, yeah, well, it, it grown a lot, I mean, later, we might talk a lot. I don't think.
Yeah. It's like you're.
Yeah, yeah, it's, he says he don't want to get in there.
Before the layers two, I was, they were probably twenty-six expensive cars, and they walk, especially not while he's high life.
It was interesting, of course, all these things there.
Yeah.
Like sometimes it's loose with, a little loose with numbers.
Pretty sick.
Yeah.
They were.
Millions of city. Nothing's like moving, if there's no one like you.
No, not at all. Doesn't matter how.
Yeah.
I did a lot of research and stuff.
I did also like a lot. Okay, I was. Sure, my guess is.
But for formal assessment or something.
Part of the conversation.
Yeah, so.
I'd be able to, no, no. If this is.
Yeah. It's a new. Lady, lady, it's.
I used to go in Fellers, my husband and I lived in Fellers.
Well, they did there.
I bet. I've knocked them back there since.
Yeah. That was pretty good, right? No, not bad.
Yeah.
After hours, I'm. Oh, sorry.
Sir, can I get a roll of both, please?
Corey Biller.
Still here.
Corey Master Petro.
Yeah.
Ever Neva, yes. Frank Sacamandi.
Here.
Michael Zion.
Here.
Jonathan Baxter.
Yeah.
Srinivijay.
Here.
Derek Aston Haverd.
Here. I'd like to make a motion to reopen the open session, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All in.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, all right, on to our applications for the evening, thank you again for your patience, uh, for the productive meeting board, and we did hopefully get through as quickly as possible, metric expectations. Uh, we have up next, the application twenty-five zero zero two, Canoe Brook Country Club, eleven oh eight Mars Turnpike Block fifty-three oh four, Lot One, preliminary and final site plan with C variance. I see we have representation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Actually, my name is Chairman, before council starts, I just wanted to put on the record, uh, that the notice was sufficient, as previously stated at a prior meeting, uh, the notice, the content and timeliness was sufficient for the September third meeting, at which we carry this memo without further notice to this evening, uh, so the board continues to have jurisdiction to hear and decide the application, and go back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Uh, good evening, my name is Hillary Als from Dempsey, Dempsey and Shan, on behalf of the applicant Canoe Brook. Is it on? It working? It should be. Is the light on? Many just tap the button. Right on the mic.
See a light now, yeah, here we go.
All right, sorry about that. Um, good evening, my name is Hillary Als from Dempsey, Dempsey and Shan, on behalf of the applicant Canoe Brook Country Club. The club is located at eleven oh eight Mars Turnpike Block five three oh four, Lot One, in the Conservation Recreation Zone. The site is location of a majority, the site is the location of a majority of the club, um, and its amenities and improvements, including the main clubhouse, poolhouse and pool, north horse, practice range building, brackets, courts, tennis building, parking area, and other associated improvement. The club continues to the other side of Route twenty-four in Summit, Block nine oh one, Lot One, where South Course is located. The improvements proposed as part of the application before you tonight are located entirely in Milburn Township, in the area adjacent to the club's entrance off of Mars Turnpike and fronting the right of way on Mars. The club has upgraded and modernized the main clubhouse, poolhouse, and recently constructed a practice range building as part of the club's overall master plan. This application is the next phase of the club's master plan and proposes the resurfacing and minor expansion of the tennis courts and reconstruction of the tennis building. This minor expansion to the tennis courts is necessitated by the addition of two six by eight shape structures located within the tennis court area. Uh, the proposed tennis building will replace the existing outdated tennis building with a modern and more functional tennis building in almost the exact same location as the existing building, and will also include underground golf cart storage. The relocated golf cart storage will be in closer proximity to the bag drop off and pickup area and the golf, uh, cart staging lane. The improvements proposed require preliminary and final major site plan approval. C variance relief for, um, a setback from the property line of eighty-four point one feet to one of the new six by eight, uh, foot shape structures and fourteen point three feet to the expanded tennis court, where thirty-three point eight feet is existing and a hundred feet is required. Um, they also, um, require C variance relief for the height of certain portions of the retaining wall, which range from one foot to eleven feet, um, and for the ten foot high chainless fence around the tennis court expansion where six feet is permitted. Um, they're also asking for waivers from certain checklist requirements, which the engineer will discuss in his testimony. Albert Costantini, a representative for the applicant, is here tonight to provide testimony together with Lena Jax, the architect, Kyle Smith, the civil engineer, and John Barry, the planner. I'm happy to answer any questions, or I can call the first witness.
Okay, all right, could we have them all stand, real quick, raise your right hand to be sworn in, and I'll swear in our board professionals, we have Mr. Keller, our engineer, and we have Mr. Pedo, somewhere back there, our planner. There he is, so if you'll all raise your right hand, to all of you, swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yeah.
Thank you all, and. Thank you all and then we can proceed some questions.
Okay, um, so I'd like to call the first witness, Albert Costantini.
Can you just say your name?
Let me think where.
C O S T A N T I N I.
Okay.
Okay, um, what is your occupation and by whom are you employed?
I'm the, uh, general manager, chief operating officer of Canoe Brook Country Club.
And what qualifications do you bring to this job?
Uh. In no little bit over thirty one years managing private clubs. Oversight of approximately fifty million dollars in capital projects, uh, since I joined Canoe Brook. And have served on multiple industry related boards, uh, throughout.
In your capacity as the chief operating officer and general manager, are you authorized to speak on behalf of the app?
Yes, I am.
And can you just briefly describe Canoe Brook Country Club?
Canoe Brook Country Club was founded in nineteen oh one, uh, as a family, uh, oriented country club, full service. Um, as Hillary mentioned earlier, we have, uh, multiple sporting, uh, aspects to the club, golf. Racket sports, swimming, uh, performance center, wellness center, uh, along with various food and beverage venues.
And has Canoe Brook been a subject of any prior approvals?
Uh, yes, in your packets that you received, uh, you've, uh, informed the previous projects today do include aforementioned clubhouse renovation. A golf operations building and. Pool, uh, pool and fitness center building, as well as the recently completed, uh, range teaching center.
Okay, I'm using, um, the aerial enlargement exhibit, which I would ask you mark A one. Can you tell the board the objectives of the proposed improvements and why are they, why they are a priority for the club?
Certainly, well. And everybody sees that. Everybody seen.
Yeah, I want to move it to do this.
That be good?
Yes. You're right.
So, uh, regarding the tennis building itself, it's the, um, last structure on this side of our property.
So when, when you say this, if you could speak directionally.
Okay, thank. Um, so on the, uh, north side of our property in the Burnt Township. Uh, it is the, uh, last building that would need to be, uh, reconstructed to fit the architectural and design. Uh, flow of, of all the other buildings on the north side of the property. Uh, we are, uh, again, as previously, previously mentioned, we're redoing, uh, four tennis courts, our true tennis courts. Uh, that are well past their useful life. Uh, and then the addition of the, uh, underground, uh, carts, uh, cart storage area. It's, it serves two purposes. One, uh, operational, it puts the carts. More in line with where they're needed on a daily basis, and there's also a safety aspect to it. Uh, if you would look on your, on the maps they have in front of you currently. Currently, the, the carts are stored in a building at the very far north side of parking lot area. And they have to, on a daily basis, drive back and forth in front of our pool entrance, our ballroom entrance, the main entrance of the clubhouse. Uh, and the tennis area to get to where they're needed, uh, which is by the backdrop area at the entrance. Uh, by having them stored underneath the new tennis building, they are where, uh, again, operationally, um, fits best. And eliminates a lot of safety issues of the carts traveling back and forth in high traffic areas.
Um, and then can you also, I don't know if you mentioned the, um, shade structures?
Uh, the two shade structures that, uh, are requiring, uh, one of the variants that we're requesting are designed, uh, to offer. As, as they say, shade from sun, uh, any other inclement weather, they're approximately six by eight feet. Uh, they're located in between two courts so that people playing matches can get out of the sun, get out of any bad weather. Uh, rest and they will also have water coolers under there as well.
Um, and would you say that the tennis facilities and golf cart storage are customarily associated and accessory to the overall, uh, country club use?
Yes, they are.
And can you explain the operations of the proposed tennis building?
Uh, the tennis building, uh, will be used, uh, tennis season runs roughly from the start of April through October. Um, obviously you got outdoor only, so they're weather dependent and they're adjacent to our, uh, recently added pickleball courts. Uh, they, the tennis courts currently do not have, uh, lights on them. The pickleball courts, once they were redone, do have lights. And we are planning on adding lights to the tennis program. Uh, that will allow us to have daytime, any evening, uh, tennis functions, events. And as they do with the pickleball courts, uh, if they're in use, the lights are turned off at ten o'clock. If the courts are not in use, the lights aren't turned on.
Um, and can you explain refuse and recycling?
Refuse and recycling will remain as existing. Uh, it is an existing operation, so we will continue with our, with our own, uh, refuse and recycling program.
Um, and as far as circulation, um, is the only change that the golf carts will come from the storage area below. The building as opposed to, um, from across the campus.
Correct.
Um, and did the applicant direct the architect to design the proposed tennis building to be consistent and compatible with the architecture of the other buildings on site?
We did. It's a plan that we've followed since, uh, the, since the original clubhouse project back in two thousand thirteen.
And will the proposed improvements have any impact on current membership?
No, we are, um, we are at capacity membership. Our bylaws dictate, uh, the, the number of members we are allowed to have. Uh, this project is really being done to, uh, enhance what's existing for the membership and is not, um. Not actually able to increase the size of the membership.
And what impact, if any, will the proposed improvements have on trip generation or off street parking?
Uh, again, uh, without, uh, an increase in, in membership levels, uh, staffing, we're also remaining the same for, uh, for both the cart. Uh, cart usage and the tennis program. There is no anticipated, uh, addition of carts.
And has the club, uh, received any neighborhood or neighbor complaints regarding activity in the area of the proposed improvements, um, in the recent past that you're aware of?
We have not. Uh, as I said, the pickleball courts, uh, that are lighted have been in use for a little bit over two years now and. Uh, we have not received any complaints about that. And the lighting for the tennis are actually going to be further away from the closest neighbor. I believe it's, um. Somewhere in the city in four hundred eighty feet from the nearest resident.
And was there a DRC meeting in connection with this application?
There was. Uh, it was a very productive meeting and I think, um, our, our engineer will testify to some specifics to that, but. Uh, it was a very productive meeting.
And did the club retain the services of experts to assist in the development, preparation and presentation of the application?
We did. Um, we have Kyle from Dynamic, uh, we have Wayne from, uh, Jefferson Group Architects, and we have John as our professional player.
Thank you. I don't have any other question.
Thirty questions for the board?
So. So any of those shade structures are going to have any solar panels, anything for solar energy?
No, they are, uh, they're wooden benches that have metal, uh, supports with a canvas top. Uh, there will not be any.
Or that's the shade.
That's the shades.
Okay.
Uh, there are a question, the, the enlarged, uh, tennis courts that is shown here on the drawing, not just the building, but the, this is what the. Tennis courts will look like?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And what, what was the reason for having to enlarge the, the, the courts?
Currently, the tennis courts don't have any shade structures on them, so the courts themselves are closer together. So to have them properly spaced to add the shade structures required us to lengthen the, the space needed for, for, to replace all four courts.
Uh, do we have any questions from our board professionals?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'll ask you in case, uh, maybe defer to the engineer. The ramps down to the cart storage from, uh, the parking lot is a pretty steep. Is that something that is typical in, uh, cart storage, having it underneath the building? Efficient use of the space, those are pretty steep.
Um, I, I believe they are to code and I will allow the, the, uh, professional to, to opine on that, but, uh, it. It's not unusual to have underground art storage, especially in facilities that are landlocked like we are.
Right. I just want to make sure you're, you're the golf course expert, so. I'll ask him.
Great. Any questions?
No questions.
So can I? What? So I'm sorry, I'm going back to green infrastructure. Uh, so in your master plan, you mentioned that there is a master plan and you are adding since two thousand twenty one or something like that. New things on this master plan. Do you have anything for green infrastructure, like solar panels to feed? Uh, the lighting or during night or I don't know. Something for stormwater management for future, anything that is green infrastructure here?
We, we currently do not have anything for, for solar or, uh, waste water management. Uh, it's not to mean that we wouldn't in the future. I know we are looking at. Eventually, as part of the master plan, uh, relooking at our parking lot of, uh, our program. Um, you know, potentially, uh, do something in those parking lots. You, you, I'm sure you've seen. Structures that have solar panels on top of coverings in parking lots, something we could, we could think about in the future, but currently.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Oh, sorry.
The, the thanks.
The Warner.
Thank you. And I just wanted to put, because, yes, you mentioned, uh, as per your bylaws, you're at maximum, maximum capacity at the club already, correct?
Correct.
What is that?
Proprietary membership.
Or, or your membership? What, what is that number if you know what that?
Um, six hundred is the number of members, proprietary members that the club is able to have. Uh, we currently have with the additional categories, seniors, non-residents, uh. What I'm gonna say approximately eight hundred memberships.
Thank you. And, uh. You said the pickleball lights have been there for two years now and no complaints?
Correct.
Some neighbors, uh, that you're aware.
Well, I, I would hear.
Okay.
No, those, those calls come directly to me.
Okay, all right. And, and then, uh, but, but where are the pickleball lights and how tall are the pickleball lights if you know what that? Well, these, I think you mentioned that they're gonna be further away from the nearest resident, but are they the same height? Are they higher, lower the pickleball?
They are the same height. Uh, they are the same style of light, downlighting. Um, and when I say further away, uh, the pickleball courts are here.
We have to, if you could describe it directionally as best you can.
So.
On exhibit A one.
On exhibit A one, they are adjacent to the service road, uh. In the northeast. Part of the parking lot, uh. As I said, approximately four hundred feet away from the nearest residents. The tennis courts are on the other side heading south. Uh, from that, on the, on this side of the, on this side of the property closest to, uh, the, uh, the entranceway. So that is adding the additional, uh, linear footage from those lights.
So the pickleball courts are close to Timberaker Road.
Sorry.
Residences.
Yes.
But the tennis court lighting, I suspect, correct it wrong, maybe, uh, closer to Route twenty four. Would that be accurate?
That would be accurate.
Uh, well, actually, sorry, um, so the pickleball light is six point nine feet, the closest light, um, to twenty four. And the lights for the tennis court will be, um, a greater distance than that to, to the.
And, and I didn't mean to try to catch you. We'll, we'll hear from the engineer, so I'll stop there. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
My problem.
No, no, no problem.
Actually, one more question.
Yes, sir.
Uh. Uh, we're moving closer to one twenty four, twenty four. Uh, any problems or any foreseen problems with tennis balls going out of the. Out of the court, it's onto the driveway or the.
No, sir, the, um. The courts themselves are laid out in a north to south. Arrangement where, but the play happens east to west.
Okay.
And there is a tenth of a fence around.
Okay.
The variance to that size.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Costantini.
Thank you.
Uh, the next witness is, uh, Wayne Jacks.
Uh, one time I overstep. Were there any questions from the members of the public? Thank you.
All right. Okay, um. Can you please go through your qualifications from the board?
I'll cry my name first, which is Wayne Jacks, J A C Q U B S.
And address, business address is fine for the record.
It's seven hundred School Street, the type of Rhode Island.
Please proceed.
Okay. Uh, qualifications, my, I'm employed by JBD, JGA Architectural and Interior Design Firm. I've been there twenty five years. Um. I have a bachelor's and master's degree at Oklahoma State University. Um, I'm licensed, currently licensed in seventeen states. I first was nineteen eighty six in Massachusetts and New Jersey was in two thousand and one. Um. But then in part of numerous boards in New Jersey, including Milburn, numerous times Summit, Essex Hills, Riverdale, West Orange, Roseberry.
License remains a good standing.
Yes.
You stayed in New Jersey and that you were accepted by, as an expert in the field of architecture, very. Well, most if not all of those boards?
Correct.
Thank you. Different of the chair. All right. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Jacks. You are acceptable to this board as well.
Thank you.
Great. Um, can you please tell the board, um, about the firm you work for specifically, whether or not that firm has a special expertise in providing architectural services to clubs?
Yes, the firm's been existed for about forty three years and about ninety percent of our work is private clubs. Uh, both country clubs, city clubs, um, or, yeah, clubs, different active clubs, that's the bulk of our work.
Um, and did Canoe Brook Country Club engage your firm to provide architectural services in connection with the improvements to the tennis field?
Yes, they have.
And can you explain the steps that you've taken to prepare yourself to get testimony this evening?
Um, we met with, um, Albert and his team at the club committees and the board, just, uh. Lab programs, he was required for the, for the project. We worked within those guidelines. We met with, um. He had various to review what's required site wise and zoning wise, point over that, uh, numerous sites that was. And the club many times worked with them for, uh, thirteen, fourteen years now, or very well aware of the site.
And can you describe the proposed improvements using the architectural plans that were filed with the application and the renderings, um. Which would be, um, the, the rendered elevations, which would be A two and A three.
I will start, start with the floor plans, which is part of your package. First one is A one point zero. That's the lower level plan, which is the art level. Um, it's. Hundred and twenty six cart capacity, hundred and twenty more electric number carts for, for adult or use. And six of them are utility cart run by the club. There's a in ramp on the western side, um. Which comes down, there's a cart wash system, they come in, they're stored and then they come out on the eastern end of it. So, um, an answer to someone's question earlier, uh, we did review the ramp slopes with, um. With the golf cart manufacturer and you're well within the limits, that, you know, speaking of one of the smaller, so they're well within the limits of. Uh, what's a lot by the. Golf cart manufacturer.
I'm, I'm sorry, I meant, you, you said the slope is well within the limits of what's required by the golf cart company?
Yeah, the maximum. So it's lower than a maximum.
Can, can you share for the benefit of everyone, including your engineer, what that slope is? And, and, and what that was permitted and how the golf company is in charge of what is in the state?
Um. The, the actual degrees I do not know. I think it's probably about five percent thunder, what their maximum allow the list. And the main point is that break points are, comes from the top going down and the bottom of break points. And that's just there with what they suggest for, um, the proper slopes, maximum slope for golf cart.
Will the engineer be testifying to this as well, or will you be the only witness testifying to the sufficiency of the slopes?
Um.
If I may.
If you. Uh, danger.
Okay. I'm a lawyer, not an engineer. I'll stop again.
Um, uh. A one point one, which is part of your package also. That's the main level plan.
And I guess we, we marked the other one A two, so we'll mark this A three, even though it appears to be very similar, if not the same as our.
So these are exactly the same as what you have that he has rendered elevations?
You got that.
Those will be A two, right? The rendered elevation.
Okay.
Not yet. Yeah.
Okay, I thought you called the other one A two. So the other one was, uh, A one point oh. And the last revised date on that? Just so we can confirm that it's what we're all looking at.
Yeah, we got small. Ten one twenty-five.
Okay. And then same for the year, A one one?
Correct.
Thank you, sorry, hold us up, thank you.
No problem. Um A one point one is the main level of the club, the ground level of the club. Um you know, they're on the north side of the building, from the parking lot. Um the the card staging is in front of that, there's um steps up to the main level and there's also a ADA accessible ramp to get into the main level. Within the main level, you have the pro shop, you have the restroom facilities that are um. Two deep toilets in each one and a shower on each side for men's and women's. And then there's a. A room that will be used currently for currently for um gathering space or gather outside under shaded areas or in sun, so they're valid indoor space really get out of the get out of the evening hat. Have their rest time or um interactions within the building as opposed to outside. Um the third plan was right, just the room plan. A three point one. Okay. And this just shows the small residential area. So percentage of uh lounge seats outside, so that shows back to that one question, what about ADA requirement for that? As long as it's less than twenty-five percent of the ground ground space. Uh seating is allowed, and we're we're under the twenty-five percent category for that, so ADA is not required for the upper level seating. The two exhibits you do do not have, so I guess this is A two. This is a rendering from the front, so this is what the club would look, the building would look like, public parking lot. Um this whole area here being the main entrance. Back here on the. Back left side is asking at the upper level seating area, pro shops over on the right and the gathering space on the left. As you see, the the materials all match the clubhouse and the other buildings on the campus, be the same same trim color, the same shapen color, roof color, all the materials. So it matches what's set on on campus. And then A point A three, which is a new exhibit. Is a view from the tennis courts. So um this shows an upper level viewing area, the gathering space and pro shop is under here, this is the courts in foreground, this is facing towards the highway view.
And can you tell the board if the proposed improvements were designed to be architecturally compatible and consistent with the other buildings on campus?
Yes, they are, we we did work on the other buildings, so we know what we drill hard inside.
Um have have you had an opportunity to review the administrative comments provided by the townships professionals?
Yes.
And can you just comment on any of those that relate to with the award?
Um I touched on the one from the engineer about the upper level seating area, which is less or within the allowable. Um so the ADA is not required um from the fire department um. Knocked socks, which will be located on on the structure. And um the engineer will be working mostly the fire department on circulation, very construction, post construction. And the building will be fully strangled, so that'll work within the NFPA requirements.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, you're referring to the August fifteen twenty twenty-five memo from the fire official?
Right, please, yes.
And just uh for those of us keeping track, we have a resolution. Uh we have one through nine, which ones are you stipulating through right now, or do you want to stipulate on behalf of the applicant for all nine? And then you could, others can testify to them as necessary.
Stipulating to all of them, and the engineer will have to fight the rest.
Well, makes it a little easier and expeditious, thank you.
Um I don't have any other questions.
I I don't know.
Absolutely.
So you mentioned hundred and twenty electric golf carts?
Yes.
So is the plan that they'll be charged overnight where they're parked?
Correct.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Your professionals have any questions?
I I got a couple, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Jacks, on sheet A one point zero, which is the lower level. The plan shows the golf courts dashed in, the crosshatched area. What does that represent?
Uh that'll be striped, painted on the concrete for the areas be kept clear of regress.
Okay, and in the east-west striped area, there are series of connected rectangles, what does that represent? And layway. Right down the middle, that in an east-west direction, these, no, in the striped area.
Oh. Oh, that's a trench drain down the center.
Okay. And that trench drain goes to the uh storm pump that the engineer will talk about?
Yes.
Okay. And then on sheet A one point one. Um you made a comment, it's it's uh. Actually, there were two, number sixteen talks about the. Landing area, so landing, the entire area um on the west. West end of the switchback, that is all flat, that's the landing area, that's the turning area.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And then.
That that's sixteen on your memo?
Sixteen on my memo, October ten.
Thank you.
Which is the technical review one A. Um and then. Is the landing at the, as you come up to the covered entry? Is the landing area for that ramp was in the paper and? Are these like limestone um tiles or what what's the the larger rectangular material? What's the?
It's a different painting pattern, but um the landing is, the top of the ramp is underneath the cover.
Okay, and and that's all at the appropriate ADA slope?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's flush with the interior floor.
Okay. And that provides the appropriate turning area for? Yes, okay. There was, oh, the other. Item was, I'm not sure what's. Number. Just so everybody is. Okay, number eight in my October tenth memo. The the plans indicate that the park store, the park. What I forget how it was phrased on the, um where they line them up for people to pick them up.
Staging.
Thank you. The steps that go up to the tenants and the, you know, I I know on A one point one, you have the turning circle for the ramp. They're all close to that staging area, is that consistent with what you've done on other designs? Is that too close?
Uh that's consistent because um. Yeah, the the carts are mostly distilled in that location and every every now and then, as as golfers go out on the round, they'll be taken out of there. And you're usually staged still with the bag, and then golf operationally.
Okay, so from your perspective as project architect, the distance from this, from the. Cart sta- staging area for the stairs and the ramp are acceptable, and you have no issues with that? I have no other questions.
Brad, you have any questions, Bill? Mr. Warner?
I have none, thank you.
Any uh members of the public have any questions? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Jacks.
Uh the next witness was Kyle Smith. I can start, I don't know. Uh your name and address, please.
Kyle Smith, nineteen oh four Main Street, Lake Como, New Jersey, zero seven seven nine.
Um you are here tonight to provide civil engineering testimony with regard to this application, and as such, I would ask you to go through your qualifications and credentials to the board.
Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer, licensed in the state of New Jersey, I have approximately eighteen years of experience. Um I work for dynamic engineering, where I've worked for the past three years. Uh that's working on all the private land development projects. Prior to that, I have fifteen years' experience working on the public sector, working um as a consultant to municipalities and private buildings.
Have you appeared in front of other boards?
Yes, I have, uh most recently in the city of Summit, as well as Free Orpouch.
And license remains a good standing, you were accepted as an expert in the field of civil engineering by those boards, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, you are acceptable as an engineer to this board as well, thank you.
Uh were you retained in your capacity as a professional civil engineer to prepare a site plan for the improvements proposed by Canoe Brook Country Club that are the subject of this application?
Yes, I was.
Um and what steps did you take to prepare for the discharge of that commission?
So first, we met with the Canoe Brook Country Club, Albert and his team, to review the scope of the project. Um then we met with the archit- project architect and the other design uh team to just review specific details regarding the project. Following that, we reviewed the zoning, uh zoning coordinates here with township of Millburn. And uh look reviewed what need to be required for this specific site. And then based off all of this, we prepared a plan set, as well as stormwater management report, in accordance with Millburn Township coverage.
And you participated in the DCA meeting, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Um was the site plan prepared in accordance with acceptable, regular, and prevailing professional engineering standards?
Yes.
Um the applicant is requesting certain checklist waivers, can you go through those waivers from board, please?
Sure, so we are requesting waiver A one F, uh that's related to copies of existing easements, covenants, and deed restrictions. Uh there's no existing within the area of our proposed improvements. Uh we are also requesting waiver for B six I, uh that's to show all existing principal and accessory structures, curves, driveways, water bodies, and wooded areas within a hundred feet of the site. Um so I'm gonna share the aerial uh overview now.
Has that one been marked?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a.
That would be A four.
New area.
Yeah, a new area, yeah.
How can we?
Yeah.
Okay, so way we could distinguish this from the other one uh by way of name, other than it's the engineer's area?
Yeah.
So so A one was an aerial um enlargement exhibit, this is an aerial, what is it?
Aerial planning exhibit. So as you can see from the overall aerial overview, the site has been developed, it's fully developed with buildings and all, of course. Um the area of improvement is a very small portion of the overall size. As you can see, um it's not, but a small portion of the site. And um none of the proposed improvements are within a hundred feet of any use that's not the Atkins County Country Club use, other than the right of way for the Morris Towne. In addition, we're requesting a waiver for C one, environmental impact study, a statement, sorry, uh per DRC five oh nine. The site is fully developed and improvements have no environmental impact on the site, uh the proposal is replacing the existing building and slightly expanding the existing tennis court. Uh this is a waiver that has been granted previously for the site.
Great, um using the plans that were filed with the board. Um and any exhibits that you have prepared, can you describe the site plan from civil engineering?
I apologize for interrupting again, uh but if if you covered all the requested waivers. Uh maybe it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman, of permission, we did get a completeness report August one from our board planner, Mr. Pedo, who seems to indicate. Uh that he recommends the waivers, and maybe we could formally confirm that the board grants same, so we can continue with the application. So I don't know, but I think we, I don't even believe we need to hear from Mr. Pedo, we we have his report. So maybe we could just have a motion second and all in favor to grant waivers pursuant to the recommendation, the cleanness waivers pursuant to the recommendation of Mr. Pedo.
Still moved, no, a second.
One second.
And all in favor.
All in favor? All opposed. Motion passes unanimously to grant the waivers accordingly with Mr. Pedo.
Right, we didn't waste any time then doing all the other stuff previously, where we can move forward now.
Excellent.
Great, thank you. Um so the project site is located on the north horse of the Canoe Brook Country Club, um that's located on the southern edge of building township. Uh the overall site is bordered by the Morris Turnpike to the south. Um wooded areas and residential um properties to the east. Um wooded areas with commercial development to the north, uh along the John F Kennedy Parkway. And then commercial development, including the Short Hills Mall to the west. Existing conditions of the overall site, it's it's a golf course with various buildings and amenities, as previously discussed. The existing tennis court is thirty-three point eight feet from the property line, uh existing pickleboard is six point nine feet to the property line. And the like for the pickleboard is twelve point five feet to the property line. Um existing golf carts, as was previously discussed, are stored by the paddle ports at the far northern end of the parking lot, and the carts are currently staged in front of the tennis building. The existing tennis building to be demolished as part of this project as well. And as part of the project, we're proposing a new tennis building as with an underground golf cart storage area. We're um providing new access to the golf cart storage under the tennis building, which necessitates retaining walls. Um that require bearings relief, the retaining walls are permitted to be up to six feet in height, we're proposing retaining walls ranging from one to eleven feet in height. Uh the retaining walls are required based on site topography and in order to provide access to the cart storage area in a safe manner to load grade. Uh there will be fall protection provided for. We're also looking to resurface and slightly expand the tennis courts. Uh tennis courts are past their useful life, and with the addition of the two eight by six shade structures. Which include a covered bench and water station uh to protect players from the weather, sun, provide rest uh and place to rest in between matches. Uh this necessitates the additional length in the courts, as previously discussed, we are not adding any new courts. Um so on sheet sixteen of the submitted plan set, and I'll I'll share it. So um on sheet sixteen, we show just a shade structure detail, this is the typical type of structure we're looking at, it's not the exact model that will be determined as part of the um. Construction permit, but this it's it's simply a bench with a counter.
And just for the record, that's uh sheet sixteen is a construction details, is that June ten twenty? Or well, actually, what is the last revised?
Yeah, so it it is.
I don't think it's smaller.
Last revised ten one twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
No problem. Uh a variance is required for the setback to one of the shade structures, distance from the property line to the shade structure is eighty-four point one feet, where a hundred feet is required. Um this will be screened by from view by landscaping and also fencing. Um it's also, it will be difficult to see due to the speed of the cars driving by. Um a variance is requested or required for the hundred-foot setback to the slightly expanded tennis courts. Uh as noted, tennis court is currently thirty-three point eight feet from the property line, and it's proposed to be fourteen point three feet. Um it will be difficult to perceive the closer distance of the courts to the property line, again, due to the screen we're proposing and the speed of cars passing by. The only use as adjacent to the tennis tennis courts is Morris Turnpike right up there. Also, share the site plan rendering. So this is the site plan rendering, um.
This be A five?
Yeah, exhibit A five with today's date. So a variance is required for the ten-foot high fence around the court, where a six-foot high fence is permitted. Um there currently is an existing ten-foot high fence around the, which surrounds the existing tennis courts. The fence will be replaced in the areas of the expanded court, obviously, to go around the the rest of the the newly expanded court. So a fence is required as a safety measure to keep balls from. So fence is required as a safety measure to keep balls from, yeah, leaving the court. There will be multiple gates for the fence, as currently designed. There's a double gate on the south side of the fence. That will be utilized by club staff to facilitate service road equipment. There's pedestrian gates to the north side of the fence. That'll be used for emergency egress only. As previously described, the nearest residence is over 482 feet away from the proposed improvements. As it relates to utilities, all the existing utilities are currently serving the site, will remain, so there's existing gas, water, sanitary sewer, and electric. There will be new connections for the proposed building, for the gas connection, sanitary sewer connection, and water. Electric will be connected to the transformer on the site, as well as to the emergency generator for backup power. The sewer capacity for the proposed site is not increasing based on the number of members remaining, the same, as previously noted. Not increasing membership. We are maintaining current circulation for the site, including there's existing bollards keeping vehicular traffic away from the golf cart staging area. So on the, on the north side of the building. That just keeps, you know, vehicles from trying to access the cart storage area. As described earlier, multiple times the cart storage is underneath the building, and with the driveway entry and exit at ramp set 20 and 25 percent respectively. This was designed in compliance with the cart manufacturer's recommendations. It shall be noted that the carts will be operated on ramps only by club personnel, and it won't be the members that are entering and leaving the cart storage area. As part of the demolition required for the project, nine trees are to be removed, whereas a total of 26 trees are proposed to be planted. The current landscaping plan shows five shade trees, ornamental trees, 17 evergreen trees, in addition to 17 evergreen shrubs, 111 deciduous shrubs, 35 perennials, and 188 ornamental grasses. We previously modified a species of ornamental flowering trees based on the township board service recommendation. Based on recommendation by the towns professionals, we will modify the plan to revise the 14 deciduous shrubs on the south side of the tennis courts to evergreen shrubs. That's, that's in this general area, on the south side of the, of the courts. Most of the landscaping species are native. Select number of non-basient ornamental tree plants have been incorporated into the design to maintain a consistent aesthetic with the existing landscaping on the site. There's stormwater management as part of the project. This project is classified as a minor stormwater development and does not require green infrastructure. We are providing attenuation with underground storage and we're to maintain reduce current runoff rates. There's lights, as previously noted, lighting will be added to the site for the, for the tennis courts. We're adding the lights to be consistent with the adjacent pickleball court. You know, we are not aware of any incidents that occurred on the service area road from any lights village from adjacent pickleball courts. The lighting plan I'll show and share now, which will be exhibit A6. So the lighting plan has been modified since our initial early lighting exhibit to reduce village to be in general conformance with NHTO requirements. The proposed closest tennis court light will be 28.2 feet from the property line, and the closest existing pickleball light is 12.5 feet from the property line. And you'll see that the, as you exit, as you get to the property line, the light, you know, you're looking at less than one foot handle moving aside, so.
Excellent. Did you have an opportunity to review the administrative comments with regard to this application, and can you respond to those?
Yes, I have, and I prepared a letter response to the engineer's latest review letter and the planner's review, posted dated October 10, 2025. We're going to hand out a copy of the letter, which will be exhibit A7. But in general, our intention is to comply with the recommendations raised by the board.
While that letter is being passed out, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to confirm my understanding of what I just heard, you're stipulating to all the comments from both the engineer and the planner and the respect of October 10 memos in their entirety. Is that correct?
Yes, as you can see in the response, we were, we were able to address the comments in accordance with, yeah, with the board professionals.
Only because it's quite a few, and we're just first getting this letter. Just to be perfectly clear, are you stipulating to everything they're requesting as they request in their respect of October 10 memo?
Maybe that part of the list of time for the board professionals to look at that memo.
Yeah, responding and addressing.
Please proceed with the chair's question.
I don't have any other questions.
Any questions for the board?
I just want to, our tennis courts, do they have life?
They do not.
So these are, these are notes. How tall are they?
They are going to be 30 feet high and to match the pickleball courts next to, you know, directly adjacent.
So they're, they're pickleball courts on 30 feet.
Correct.
The current footprint of the building, are you shifting that at all, or is it just sitting within the same footprint? And maybe more explicitly, are you moving into what the existing parking lot is now?
We're, we're expanding the footprint. So the existing building footprint of the existing building was 1,020 square feet with a canopy of 970 square feet. Our proposed building footprint is 3,975, so there is an expansion of the building.
Where's, where's that, is that taking place into the parking lot? Into what is the current tennis area?
It's working towards the tennis area and, and actually in the east-west direction. The footprint is expanding in the east-west direction here as well.
Okay, so it's going south and east-west?
Correct.
Is there any consideration to minimizing or trying to minimize expansion so that there wasn't further encroachment towards the property line?
I, I would defer to the architect on the proposed, you know, requirements within the building.
But also the tennis courts already start, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's where the tennis courts currently start. So we're trying to work within the area that the current footprint was to ensure that they, you know, add all the monkey circles within the site.
But the current tennis courts are going to be demolished to be repaid?
Yeah, resurface and, and why? In order to accommodate shade structures out of the course.
And that's sort of where I was getting at, is, you know, you're moving pretty close to the property line. You're, you were at 33, 33, 34 feet about from the property line, and now only 14 feet to the property line. I wonder if there's any consideration to not shifting the building as much this towards the, the tennis courts, existing tennis courts, or making that property a little bit more narrow to prevent the, or as much of the encroachment towards the property line as possible. I just, I don't know if there's any consideration.
Yeah, it certainly was reviewed, and when you look at the proximity out there, as was mentioned by the township's board engineer, the proximity of the building to the golf cart path area kind of, it kind of hinges in going more in that direction. And given that the pickleball court is, has close proximity to the right-of-way currently, we figured that was our direction now.
And also, Mr. Constantine, am I able to answer your question?
So we, we did not want to go any further than we're already going towards the property line. So that, to allow us to do the programming we want to do in the building, that, that required us moving in, in that southern direction and the east-west. We feel that the size of this building is appropriate for the programming that we want to apply to it.
Remind me, and I, you said this, so I apologize. The fence along the service road, how long is that fence? Would, we're, we're requesting 10 feet.
Oh, well, just to be clear, there's a fence along the service road that's shorter, and then the fence around the tennis court is 10.
Correct.
All right, so I'm sorry, I was asking about the fence along the service road, not, not the tennis.
That's not being modified.
That's not being, um, remaining.
And what is that currently?
The height.
I don't have the height.
Sorry, I don't have that, I don't have the email.
Probably less than 10 feet.
Well, less than 10.
The specification for the golf carts on this slope, is that wet or dry?
It's based on, you know, meeting the required, you know, the manufacturer's recommendations.
Right, but is the recommendation for the slopes for a wet road or a dry road, wet wheels, or probably, depends on the type of specification?
We, we didn't review that.
Just curious, because if it's for dry, then they come back wet.
Understood.
Could you show us, you show us where the local retaining wall is?
Yeah, so on, basically, the retaining wall is required in order to get from, you know, current grade down to the, you know, 10, 10-foot depth, plus or minus. So retaining walls are both at, on both sides of this range coming in, and then on both sides of the land exiting. But it, you know, it's a retaining wall, but it's dropping down below grade, so visibility is going to be, you know, much more impacted, especially with all the things as well.
And could you also describe, and I want to question here dealt with the stormwater runoff? How is it being prevented?
So there's, there's trench drains for both, both ramps. Basically, they're being picked up by trench drains across that, and it's in order to pick up the, just the ramp area. And small tributary, we're going to have a depressed curve, so a 2-inch reveal across this to not allow, or to overtop down the ramp. So it's really just, the trench drains are going to handle the stormwater that's coming down. And then the secondary, there's inlets also, another inlet here on this ramp, and at the overhead doors, I think we're showing a lot of the technical drawings, that are additional trench drains at the doors. They're all connect, interconnect to a system within the building, which has a stormwater pump that'll, that'll pump it out into existing gravity storms.
So to all of the ones protecting the underground structure, go to the, the pumps?
That's correct.
And where is the emergency generator located for the, for the sites?
It's, it's on the northern end of the driveway or the parking lot. So the emergency generator is, it's tough to see, but it's on that northern end right here.
And that's existing?
Existing.
And no modifications to it, no additional?
Correct, no.
Keller, do you have any questions?
I do, I have a couple. And this, this letter, what they skimmed through answers a lot of the questions that we have. Couple things I still want to touch upon. So number six in my October 10 memo, the two proposed brick paver walkways that lead from the tennis courts to the drive aisle, those are not intended for players to use. That is for club personnel for access for maintenance or whatever.
All right, so, yeah, let me clarify, the two brick pavers, that's just for emergency egress. So it's not for the players to use unless, you know, in the case of emergencies, just a way to get out. The, the double gate here on the south side, that's really going to be utilized for equipment, yeah, for, for servicing the equipment by club personnel.
Right, okay, all right. The other thing, number seven, you talked about, you know, we had a concern about proximity of that southwest corner of the tennis courts to the drive aisle. Would you consider something besides bollards? Some concern that the bollards themselves are going to be a potential hazard in looking at a guide rail thing more attractive than a galvanized thing? I'm just, I don't think the bollards were appropriate use in that area.
Yeah, I mean, we were, I, we understand the concern with the proximity and looking at the bollards that affected it similar to our locations within the site. But that's something that we can review if you have strong opposition to the bollards.
Subject to the review and approval of our board engineer, should the application be granted? And should the board wish to have such a condition? Like for that, whether it's bollards or some alternative structure and, and the location, if that is what our engineer is looking for?
Yes.
And just, is there anything that can be done to even increase that distance between the corner of the fence and the driveway to, to increase it from, you know, 2.7 feet? I'm not a tennis player.
Yeah, we looked at it with a tennis, tennis court designer, and that, that was the suggestion, because we had the same desire, and that really was the minimal distance on the sides of the court that, you know, to me.
Maybe ask them a little bit harder and say, you know, can we get a couple more feet? If they'd like to get, you know, having the guide rail itself is going to have a section of at least a foot between the post and, and the rail, and whatever spacer you have could be as much as 15 inches. And that means that that guide rail, the face of that guide rail is going to be almost on the face of the curb. If there's anything that they can squeeze out of that, at least give two foot of separation from the, at face of the curb, the face of that guide rail is, I think, going to be helpful.
I'm curious to whether you can cut the pavers that come off the tennis building by a foot or foot and a half or something and shift the court just down. That would give you more room on, on both of them.
Yeah, we can review that with the tennis designer. The concern is the 2.7 feet.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and whether it's the fence, it's what Mr. Miller is suggesting of taking that whole court area and shifting it north is going to increase that separation.
You know, like, I don't know how, like, if the pavers are just cut back by a foot or something, and then it just give you that little.
Yeah, yeah, we'll review that.
The storm pumps that you're putting in to deal with the drainage at the cart storage level, is that going to be connected to the emergency generator? Is that going to be part of the system?
That's correct, yeah.
Great. Mr. Smith, did I hear you say that there are bollards across the ramp down to the cart storage and a ramp up to the cart storage?
Now, let me clarify, the bollards are here on the, the northeast corner. It's basically, we're very light to see, but it's just to not allow vehicular traffic to try to come down the cart storage area.
Oh, they see on.
Yeah, and the removable bollards that, just will make sure that a car doesn't try to go down there. Just allow carts to.
So looking at sheet six of your plans, last revised, 10/1. So those bollards exist?
That's right, and they're going to, they're going to remain.
I didn't notice them before. It just, I, I would suggest that you look at them. It looks like. I didn't notice that before, I just, I I would suggest that you look at them, it looks like if somebody's coming from. Twenty four. If they hug the curb line, they could sneak through. It it, you know, I haven't been out to the site and and to see that, but. I would just, you know. You certainly don't want somebody driving down. The staging area, certainly not down into the park store.
Understood, we'll review that.
About the driving down route twenty four and the ballards?
It's sort of up here, right. The service entrance.
That's the driveway.
That's the driveway into the.
Oh, I'm sorry, but. But we will need it somehow on the record.
So there the the. My question on the ballers was at the northwest corner. Of the uh or. Of the tennis building, the driveway down to the cart store. The existing, they were saying that, I think they were. Mr. Constantini was confused about where I was referencing, the ballers are not out by twenty four, but it said driveway coming in. That if somebody comes along that driveway on the west side of the tennis court, if they hug the curb line. It it appears, I haven't put a scale to it, that they could sneak between the curb line and the follow. Maybe.
No, I I think it's a a too small for a a vehicle to to get through there.
I mean, it scales. Seven feet, eight feet. Yeah, I I'm just, you know. It's really, it it's really club operations, I mean, they're the ones responsible for it. I'm just raising a question, if you think it's fine. You know, it's your property, um, and your liability, so I'm I'm just. I'm just, you know, um. And if it's unchanged from how it's been for however long, um.
I would say it's an existing condition and there have not been any. Issues so far.
Because everybody knows, just because that's the way it is today, doesn't mean that it should stay that way and here's an opportunity. You think it needs to be fixed? If you don't. Again.
I'm sure it's something that the club would look into, um, but. But as of right now, I think it's going to remain as existed.
Okay. That's fine.
I don't have any other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pedo, any questions?
Just one type of question, um.
Mr. Pedo, if you could refer, if it's an item in the report, if you could refer to.
So first, I just want to thank the applicant for submitting this report, it's very helpful. Uh, most of the comments that I have raised were addressed, I also appreciate the revised lighting plan and the notes relating to the reasons for that, so that's very helpful as well. Um, I just wanted to note with respect to item number five that was addressed, uh, it's the last page, uh, page eight of the memo that we took this evening. Uh, my item number five indicates that the applicant consents to, um, oh no, I'm sorry, it's number six. The landscaping plan will be revised to include evergreen shelves on the south side of the proposed tennis courts above the immediate roadway. Um, my comment had recommended, uh, expanding the fencing area to effectively screen the entire course of that, uh, the tennis court screening. So I just wanted to confirm that, that wasn't clear in in the response comment.
Um, yeah, I I. Just additional screening, I don't perceive that.
Yeah, so, yeah, just just to further further clarification, along that south corner, yeah, yes, exactly, and application extending the screening along the entire course of the.
So just to fill this gap here.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, okay, so with that clarification and your full understanding of the comment number six in Mr. Pedo's. October ten memo, you are stipulating to comply with same info, correct?
Correct.
Of the planner's report, yeah.
Six.
So I have a question. So, um, what is the fence on top of the retaining wall, the ramp going for the cats? Because it's a typical fence, but you don't see the typical fence for the new days.
Um, on top of the retaining wall, it's it's a protect, it's a fall protection fence. We did not provide a detail on that.
Alright. So it's going to be like a railing or protection like forty three inches high?
That would be a typical protection, protection, so. It'll be reviewed by the board engineer. And as a, and as well as the construction department as part of the, um, consulting from the application process.
Thank you, you reminded me of one other question. Sorry. Looking at that, and the the service drive, that's the service drive on the west side of the. That is less than ten feet to that remaining. That retaining wall. Is. Six feet. Five to six feet in height. Yes, hang on. I can't help myself. I'm concerned that. A vehicle. You don't have that wall there today, you have a vehicle comes up for whatever reason. You know, drives off the road, they're now facing a six foot ground. I think you you certainly need the fall protection fence, but you're also gonna need a vehicle. I think you need to extend the gut or put a section of guide rail in there to keep that vehicle going well vers. Or sit that six foot wall, and it's too close.
Yeah, so there are in this area, there's um an existing FTC and there's, or was FTC right in that area? And there's a a few ballards already existing and another ballard proposed. Um, for that to protect the. FTC, but it would, it would impact as a similar protection for the for the retaining walls.
Car hits those, duck, it's probably ducked the liner pipes. Fill with concrete.
Correct.
Um, a vehicle hits those, they're gonna snap. They hit them at any kind of speed, they're gonna snap. Um, it's not like the ballers you see in front of, you know, Wawa, where somebody pulling it to the park in space. You know, they're coming down a drive like. You know, I I think you need something more than the existing ballers here to protect. Um, everybody, you know, from the vehicles going over.
We'll review that further.
There's there's also speed bumps, they have to speed.
Uh, yeah, there's speed bumps on the entryway as well?
Uh, and leave it to the board, they've heard my concern. Be part of my concerns.
Yes.
I have one more question about the demolition plan, and it says to be able to tell us the uh. Individual trees being removed, would you happen to know those offhand, especially the larger ones where the tennis court's being expanded?
I I do not have information on, but we will comply that.
And any chance those trees could be in the brands planted instead of just removed?
We are replacing them.
We're, we are replacing them, yeah, there's nothing to be removed on.
Replacing, but according to the township ordinance. Yeah, if if I may, Mr. Chairman, just uh. For my clarification, the foresters, I thought I heard you say that the foresters made a certain recommendation. But you may have said that it was a different recommendation with perspective species and was changed back, can you clarify that for me? Are we complying with the foresters? August eighteen, twenty twenty five recommendation or not?
We are, we already trust that that recommendation.
Okay, I misheard that. Thank you. Are there any questions for the public? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Pedo.
Uh, final witness is John Barry.
It's an address of your workhouse. Sure, uh, G O Box twenty five, Manhattan Islands, New Jersey, M J Planning L L P. Bye bye, I'm Howard.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I thought, yeah.
I think, I think it's a qualification.
That's fine, I got it. Licensed planner in New Jersey, a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, and had been in good standing in both cases since twenty fourteen. Uh, I'm the managing partner at M J Planning L L P and represent. Boards and townships throughout the state and regularly testify in front of various boards as well. Um, I've been for the Millmore, Millburn zoning board with the Newbrook Club, the last time maybe. For one of the township's boards for approval, and I've testified at Trent Barhill. Hold up, uh, Trent Barhills and Fairfield in the last two weeks.
Yeah, license is still in good standing?
It is, yes.
Alright, you are acceptable as a planner support, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, so in preparation for the testimony this evening, I reviewed the plans and spoke with. The team about the proposal, understanding all of the information that was presented to you this evening. Review the township's ordinance, the and master plan, the twenty eighteen master plan. Preexamination for being the the most up to date version of that. So we've heard a lot about the application and its context, so I won't go back over all the ground we've covered. The um. Purpose of the application. You heard through expand the tennis building. Extend the course slightly to accommodate the shade structures that are proposed. And we're within a hundred and twenty nine acre parcel, it's a unique here piece of land certainly in uh in the township. Developed with the Newbrook Country Club and has been for many years. Variety of club facilities and that's permitted use in the sea conservation recreation zone. Proposed additions are essentially modifications to accessory uses that go along with with part of the club. The, in our our context here, we're we're located in the southern portion of the site. The immediate neighbor is really just the Morris Turnpike one twenty four access road and then beyond that Route twenty four. The nearest residential neighbors are order ninety or so feet to the to the east and between the improvements and those neighbors, we've got pickleball courts. Parking lots, driveways, drive range, so it's it's quite a quite a distance and quite a lot of intervening uses. Uh, that'll speak to the relative lack of impact of anything that's happening here on the neighborhood properties. So the relief that that we're here before the board to request as part of the the site plan approval is for a front yard setback. Front yard setback to the Morris Turnpike roadway here for the the proposed shade structures, uh, or the most. Southern western most of the shade structures, it's eighty four point one feet to the property line where a hundred feet is required, so it's about sixteen feet short of of. What the ordinance calls for for a structure, you saw the the generic shade structure design when I was testifying. Minimal in size and open structure, so we're not dealing with walls that'll um block light air and open space and create a a substantial visual impact off the property. The, we, I believe noticed for and identified in the plans and it was in Mr. Pedo's report also that the tennis courts themselves have fourteen point three foot setback. I would debate whether they count as a structure, the purposes of setback, but um. Pickleball courts at next door, right, just to the uh south and and east were approved. With a lesser setback without, I mean, you come to the board, so I believe that the the township can consider. The surface of the court to be a something that required that setback, but. There's a a minimal impact and enhanced screening that we heard about will uh certainly buffer any visual in impact of the enhancement of the tennis court. The retaining wall height is also a variance and then style testified it's going down into the ground rather than up and retaining earth. So it won't really be visible to anyone who's not going down the ramp or standing above it. Uh, if you look out over the parking lot, it won't be standing up going down, so. The uh visual impact again will be be minimal there, uh, posed height at its maximum of the retaining walls is eleven feet where six feet is permitted for walls. The um. Final variance is related to the the chain link fence that we've heard about surrounding the the tennis court itself. There's an existing ten foot chain link fence which is common for tennis courts and baseball uh fields and so so forth as a way to control balls. Um, so just expanding in kind as the tennis court extends a little bit to to make sure that that. Uh, ten, that the foot, the ten foot fence is effective for that purpose or safety, security and their kickballs contained within the court. So um, there's a slight element of of hardship associated with the location of the existing tennis courts that are being reused and resurfaced and repurposed. As part of this overall development, um, the bumping out toward the road that's driving some of the setbacks is related to. Placement of those shade structures, not necessarily adding additional tennis court play space or expanding the intensity of the tennis courts themselves. Um, but overall, I think the the best approach here is to look at these as a C two variance where. Benefits of the project on this particular piece of property related to the purposes of zoning outweigh any potential detriments. Purpose A, of municipal land use law is certainly advanced in terms of guiding development of land, promote public health, safety, morals and welfare. Site improvements, we heard about with the golf cart movement across the parking lot that exists today is gonna be minimized and we're gonna have. More secure storage area for the golf carts, it's gonna lessen potential conflicts between both pedestrians and uh club members coming and going through the parking lot. So that's a, that's certainly a safety um enhancement for the club. The shade structures themselves benefit the tennis players, public health and safety and welfare is providing place of shade and get out of the weather. Um, so those are, those are certainly benefits. Also, purpose G in terms of providing sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses, including recreational uses. Um, this is continuing the viability of the the country club that's been a member of the community for many, many decades and continue to be so. And this is a enhancement to maintain the status quo with its membership and and enhance the facilities that it offers. And then finally promoting a desirable visual environment, purpose I, we heard from Wayne in the architecture discussion, how the tennis building. Being designed in context with the other improvements in other buildings on the site, well, which recently even through the process of modernizing. And then also the cart storage facility, the uh significant visual improvement because they'll be tucked under and won't be out and about in the in the open air. As to the negative criteria, I think the context of where these improvements are taking place really speak for themselves. There aren't any neighbors, either residential, commercial or or other uses that will even perceive any of this. The only visual impact that's possible is from the roadway. I think you have very limited visual impact and the enhanced landscaping in conjunction with uh Mr. Pedo's report. And the um lighting will be consistent with what's out there today and has been. Modified and reduced so that there's no spillage of any consequence onto the roadway. And then last but not least, in the context of the township zoning ordinance and master plan, the use is is permitted, so we're doing what we're intended to do within the zone. And there's limited discussion really about this zone in the master plan. But there is one objective that's that's similar to the purposes of zoning that's referenced about providing a variety of recreational opportunities to serve the needs of all ages. Putting indoor and outdoor facilities, active and passive recreation, so continuing the club's mission and providing that many for others is consistent with the master plan. So um, I would offer that there's ample justification to grant this relatively minor relief and I would take any questions.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from professionals? In the corner? No. Any questions for the public? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Barry. It's just advised that, yeah, we we should have public comment before this nation's test only, uh. Yeah, are there any members of the public who'd like to comment on the application? Well, thanks.
You just want me to stand up and sit. Um, okay, so not to belabor the presentation, um, as we've just heard the expert testimony, um, and the advocates, professionals and the planner. Mr. Barry just went through all of the proofs, um, and I just want to summarize by saying that the proposed improvements have been designed to conform with the site plan ordinance. And the applicant has agreed to address the recommendations of the townships, um, professionals as discussed by the civil engineer and reflect and exhibit a. And the applicant has agreed to address the recommendations of the township's professionals as discussed by the civil engineer and put it in exhibit A7. The tennis courts and the tennis building are located in an area that's closest to Route 124. The nearest residence is over 482 feet away, which is screened from the club property by mature landscaping. The existing courts are currently not in compliance with the ordinance. They're 33.8 feet from the property line. The minor expansion of the courts necessitated by an addition of the two shade structures will result in a distance of 14.3 feet from the property line. The shade structures which are necessary to protect players from weather, heat, sun and exposure, as well as to provide an area to rest, will be 84.1 feet from Route 124. It will be virtually impossible to perceive the closer distance of the courts to the property line in this location of the club or the distance of the shade structures from the property line due to the existing fencing on the property line. Tennis court fencing, the landscape screening and speed of the cars driving along this portion of Morris Turnpike. The chain link fencing, which currently exists at 10 feet, is simply being relocated due to the minor tennis court expansion. This fencing is typically associated with sports courts for safety reasons. And the view from off-site will be substantially the same as what is existing. Retaining walls necessary to accommodate the access to the underground golf cart, golf cart storage range from 1 feet to 11 feet and will have fall protection. The increased height over the six feet permitted is necessary for stabilization and safety of the area to allow the golf cart storage. It is internal to the site and will have no visual impact on the neighboring residences. The proposal advances several purposes of zoning as just testified to by the planner. There will be no substantial detriment to public good nor substantial impairment to the intended purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Because as testified to by the applicant's experts, stormwater drainage will be appropriately managed. Proposed improvements are located a significant distance from surrounding properties. Tennis court and small shade structure will not be easily perceived by and past or by, due to the existing and proposed fencing, landscaping and speed of cars. There's no anticipated increase in membership or intensity of use. There's no weighted increase in trip generation to the site or off-street parking demand. And the proposal will provide an aesthetic. Thank you.
If there's nothing further, Mr. Chairman, I can tee it up for the board for consideration and please, anyone, anyone at all, correct me if I'm wrong. But I understand the application preliminary and final major site plan approval involves bulk variance relief for these shade structures setback to the property line of 84.1 feet versus 100 feet. The expanding tennis court setback to the property line, 14.3 feet versus 100 feet minimum required. Retaining walls from 1 foot to 11 feet high along the lower golf cart storage area, whereas six foot maximum permitted for retaining walls and fences. And the chain link fence surrounding the tennis courts as high as 10 feet in height, whereas six foot maximum height permitted for, as mentioned, retaining walls and chain link fences, those are the four bulk variances. At issue, I have the applicant stipulating to all the conditions set forth in the planner's report and the engineer's report, both of October 10, as well as the fire official's report of August 15, the foresters' report of August 18. And there was no concerns expressed by the police department in their August 25 memo.
Can I just ask a question about the engineer's report? So we're agreeing to address the report as stated by the civil engineer and what's in exhibit A7.
Correct, I'll, given that the engineer, our engineer had an opportunity to review it and followed up with questions. That's acceptable to him, that's how I understand the stipulations. In other words, as said forth in your exhibit A7 with respect to the engineer and the planner's.
The only clarification I would put is the consideration of guide rail or some other protective means along the service drive at the southwest corner of the tennis courts where it's currently 2.7 feet. And something at the entrance drive to the golf cart storage area of providing something there.
Right, as stipulated to by the applicant, I was going to get to those two caveats to the reports. But yes, one was your item number seven, southwest corner proximity to the drive aisle and the stipulations with respect to attempts to utilize guard rail or something other than a bollard subject, there will be an approval of our engineer as well as the attempts to expand the distance beyond 2.7 foot width. Good faith diligent efforts to do so again in conjunction with our board engineer.
That incorporates a comment looking to potentially take out a strip of the.
The strip.
So they're, you're willing to look into it, consider it and work with board engineer about it?
In good faith, in order, with the understanding that the expectation is that there will be an increase in the space between the drive aisle and, I believe, it's the golf cart. Mr. Dorr?
No, the tennis courts.
Oh, sorry, tennis court.
There's nothing to move at the northwest corner where the golf cart storage ramp goes down, is what it is. It's just a matter of putting some sort of protection there.
And or pulling it closer to the building by taking out a strip of.
Well, that would affect the southwest corner of the tennis courts, an increase to 2.7 feet to something greater. Moving the tennis courts isn't going to address the need for guide rail between the service drive and the ramp going down. You know, that's fixed.
So I understand it's a good faith effort to address both those issues with our board engineer. The goal being expanding it 2.7 feet, beyond 2.7 feet and utilizing guide rail and/or some other structure for purposes of safety.
Correct.
Is that understood to be the condition stipulated to by the applicant?
Yes.
And then the other was the service drive on the west side? Oh, there was less than 10 feet to the retaining wall, oh no, we didn't.
That's what we just talked about.
Yeah. Okay, we got them both.
Yeah, we got them both. We're good.
Never mind.
I'm good.
If the engineer's good, the attorney's just out.
They've stipulated that they will work with us.
And that will be clarified in a memorializing resolution if in fact it is an approval. So again, we got the preliminary and final with four bulk variances. And you heard from all the witnesses, including the planner, primarily a C2 argument for the variance relief. And it requires a majority of the board, we have seven tonight, four out of seven. Do a hard math late at night, thank you. Back to you, Mr. Chairman. And the board to deliberate vote.
Now, I just want to ask you a question based on previous experience here, who enforced this condition of approval?
Who enforces the.
So we know that they are going to be working on this condition, for example.
Well, the board engineer or board planner as appropriate, depending upon which conditions of approval they each have their own.
So during construction, they will verify that this is being accomplished.
That's my understanding, but maybe they can, they can, they're under oath, they can speak to it as far as compliance. Also, the administration and we have a construction, building department that handles a lot of this as well. So, but they have to, they have to, in order to ultimately get the approvals and the plans certified, they have to have all these items addressed to the satisfaction of either the board professionals or the town administrative personnel.
During construction, you are going to, you are going to verify.
But this is all prior to.
No, I'm talking about during.
So assuming that the board approves this, they don't get signed site plans until we, myself, Mr. Pedo, review it and say that all of the conditions, all the comments in our letters were adequately addressed. Then we'll work with the, with the engineering department, with Sarah's group, that plans get signed. Once they're signed, then the inspections during construction go to the township engineers. Correct.
Okay. Right, they take it to the plan signature stage and the town, the building department, construction department, take it through the construction process.
You know, in some towns, we do the inspections and some towns, engineer does them because you have, you know, staff that are employees. But somebody goes through it and makes sure that before they get a CO, the engineer, planner and the building department are all aligned and the ultimate thing is they don't get a CO until everybody signs off.
Okay.
So.
I think we're back to deliberations and a vote by the board.
Does anybody have any comments, questions, I mean, like to make a motion?
I say go that.
All right. I'm going to assume it was a motion to grant the approval with all the stipulated two conditions?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'll assume that was the second as well.
That was it. Roll call, please.
Corey Miller?
Yes.
Corey Masco Petro?
Yes.
Deborah Neves?
Yes.
Frank Sakamandi?
Yes.
Michael Zion?
Yes.
Jonathan Baxter?
Yes.
Srinivas Jay? Keston Howard.
Yes. Thank you, and much success with your.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and I can give you electronic ones too, does that work? Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, next on our agenda is application 2503, 003. For giving a book out, correctly, Sea Cats Fit LLC and Sea Cats Fit Gym, 535 Milburn Avenue, Block 1706, Lot 2. Preliminary and final site plan with C variants. And Mr. Chairman, if I may, the, you'd have an opportunity to review the notice, it was originally noticed for September 17th meeting date. At that time, the 20-foot residents in Milburn were notified, but it was determined that the utilities and the residents within 200 feet in Frankfield Township may not have been notarized, notarized, notified or noticed. So we did carry to the October 15th this meeting with further notice to those omitted recipients. And we have confirmed with Sarah's help that all parties that were required to be noticed have now been noticed. And of course, it was a publication notice as well, all timely for this evening, October 15th meeting. So the board does have jurisdiction to hear and decide the application. I believe we'll hear from applicant's counsel perhaps, and then at the appropriate time, I'll swear all the witnesses out.
Good evening, Chair members of the board, my name is Vanessa Shalovich, I'm here pro bono as an attorney for the applicant, the.
If you could just lower the mic a bit more.
Try? Like that? My name is Vanessa Shalovich, I'm here as an attorney on behalf of the applicant, Chris Katz, for application 25003. The application is not complete, preliminary and final major site plan approval with a C variant specifically for relief from the Wall Street parking requirements at 535 Milburn Avenue. This application involves no exterior site changes, the space will be used for personal training sessions, small fitness classes. At this time, I'd like to introduce you to Chris Katz, owner of Sea Cats.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I can swear to all the witnesses, your other witnesses this evening will be who?
We're going to have Mr. Nicholas Nassif, planner.
That's your architect?
Architect and planner.
And planner, oh, okay. And if you both raise your right hand, as well as our board professionals, Mr. Pedo and Mr. Keller, do all of you swear to God or a permanent testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you all, please proceed.
Hi, thank you to the board and the professional staff for hearing my application this evening. Excited to open my business in Short Hills.
I apologize for interrupting, I do that a lot, I hope apologize, I might interrupt, I apologize for that. Their address, a business address is fine.
535 Milburn Avenue, Short Hills.
Thank you, please proceed.
I would say to hopefully open my business in Milburn and Short Hills, thank you to Ms. Axstobi for her assistance and Mr. Grillo for his assistance throughout the application process. I have found they were extremely respectful and accommodating to me. And I'm thankful that my grandmother and my aunt are here in support of me. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our planner, Mr. Nicholas Nassif.
Good evening. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for listening to us talk about scintillating topic of parking.
But if I may, before you begin, you'll give us your.
Yes.
Full name, address, business address is fine for the record. And if you're being sought to be accepted by the sport as an expert in both architecture and planning, of course, you'll have to give us your qualifications and licensure as such.
Absolutely, Nicholas Nassif, N-A-S-S-I-F-F. Stephen Cohen Architects PC slash construct, architecture and engineering, PLLC, Stephen Cohen being a subsidiary. Business address 63 Moran Avenue, that's M-O-R-A-N in Princeton. I'm a licensed professional planner, a member of American Institute of Certified Planners for almost 16 years now. Testified in front of zoning, planning boards, governing bodies in the state supreme court and roughly 70 or 75 times across the state in the last 15 years. Point of clarification, I am not an architect, I'm a PVAIC PD. My firm also has architects in the industry.
And your license for planning is current in New Jersey?
Yes, sir.
But you're being sought to be accepted as an expert in architecture only as.
Planning only, providing the planning testimony for the relief.
I'm Richard Shippitt, got you, okay, thank you, the current of the chair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Nassif, you are acceptable to the board as a planner.
Thank you, appreciate it. I'm going to try to run through this quickly, very simple application, Mr. Katz is opening a private, one-on-one, personal training studio and small group class studio, same operation. Located at 535 Milburn Avenue, simple change of tenant. And classes are. Okay, so one point of clarification is a private, not open to the public, membership. Okay, so one, one point of clarification is a private, not open to the public, uh, membership based, um. Personal training is small group class facility. Um. One of the key elements is that classes are staggered, they're capped at ten. Uh, with two. One-on-one personal training sessions at any given hours. A little bit more than fifty percent of the class hours are held before or after nine to five business hours uh in the district. Just for context, that's important, um, the subject site is located in the B three. Um. Business zoning district, permitted use, the only relief being sought tonight is for a parking various C, C one. Um, which is a common condition in that quarter, there is no off-street parking for any of the existing buildings, um. The exception of the bank on the west end. Um. One other thing I'd like to add is. There was, I forgot my reading glasses, which I just became a candidate for. Um, and I'm not just bringing them with me, so might be getting this a little bit. Um. I just wanted to say that the review letters provided by the uh, police fire, uh, in Mr. Pedo's office, um, we had no. Jctions to anything written in those uh, notes. Uh, I'm sorry, in those memos, there were a few recommendations, we're absolutely agree to. Um, we comply with our signage uh requirements that were also noted on the application. Uh, we had one point, we we omitted the height of the sign, that's flagged by Mr. Pedo's memo, and we agree that. All signage will comply with the coverage percentage requirements, which were notated and hyped if we're not. Limited to two feet, proposed signs roughly one point seven two each. Last point is. Mr. Katz will mandate and will provide off-street parking passes for all of his employees. And that's pretty much some issue in the application, uh, so you can really for. I bet off-street parking does not exist, this existing building.
Any questions from the board?
Can you just clarify, you're saying there are ten classes at a time?
No, 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 there's, yes, point of clarification, I apologize, that's where I got caught in forgetting my reading. So there are two principal things happening at any given time, there are small group classes, which are limited to ten participants. And maximum of two one-on-one. Private training sessions on the other side of the existing space.
And how many group, small group classes at a time?
One, only.
Just one small group class?
Yep, the space is sort of bifurcated in half the existing building as it's currently, um. Constituted, and one side has some training equipment where the one-on-one sessions take place, that's a maximum of four people at any given time. Uh, one trainer. One client, one trainer, one client, and then the right side of the structure is where the group classes uh take place, and there are one at a time, ten maximum participants. Emphasizing the small group.
Okay, understood, and you're saying that most of this is gonna occur before nine in the morning and after five thirty?
That's correct, slightly over fifty percent of the classes happen up until. They actually conclude just before nine A M, and then the rest happen. Right, with five thirty, five fifteen is the next batch of classes.
We have, um, our classes are five fifteen A M, uh, we have one class at eleven thirty A M. But in between nine and five, our only class is eleven thirty A M, and then the rest are at six P M or seven. So it's about four different slots, and Saturday we've got one at ten.
I'm sorry, so there's a five fifteen A M class and then nothing again until eleven?
In terms of classes, now there is training going on.
But that's one-on-one.
That's one-on-one, right, in terms of classes, it's five fifteen, eleven thirty, rest around. Nine, five.
And do you see, do you foresee any additional classes? Um, early in the morning?
Um, well, I always, right now at least, I have it, uh, if I just could, um, you know. If I do get approved, I would have to say I could fill those times, but in future, I mean. Maybe, but I think I really like the mornings for myself, um, so I would just add maybe six A M, and then. You know, obviously, it's a good problem, every single class.
And are you the only person teaching?
Uh, right now I am, um, but we will be having yoga as well, but those are also not between nine and five, I'm only teaching between nine and five.
Okay.
First.
I think I said a question for Chris again, that the yoga is also limited to the ten participants?
Yeah, um, it's usually, we're gonna, the only thing we're gonna have is smaller, nothing will be past that, I don't like that structure myself, so I'm not gonna.
Any administrative staff, are there?
There's one manager, um, she switches sometimes, she works from home, sometimes she works, she's doing more administrative stuff, so. She's not there all the time, but she does have a home.
One important uh, point of clarification, um. The maximum number of people in the building, so we have plus and. Two training sessions and a manager is fifteen people in the building. So that's a small group class. Possibility that there be fifty-two concurrent one-on-one training sessions, and the manager, if she happens to come in that particular day.
I have a question, uh, is this already in operation?
No, no.
It does not, it seems like, maybe it was.
Mr. Katz, ready to go?
His uh, his website is operational, um, his class and schedules are operational, but. Not currently, even though.
So, would you ever know if the adjoining properties are recon or particularly occupied? They're both, they're both occupied, yes, that's correct, um, in fact, I, Mr. Grillo can testify, uh. Or come up during public comment period, um, both Mr. Katz and Mr. Grillo have been in contact with, with both, um. Both owners of either of both of those businesses, it's a salon in a, uh, I.
Last.
The last studio, and I am having report that both proprietors. Have signed up to become members in the private one.
Just to be clear, um, would be the, on their sworn testimony, there's been no operation as of yet, so classes held in that building. Prior to this, because I've, I've, I've heard reports in the community that don't say otherwise, and that concerns me.
And sir, sir, I think, if I may, I think that was a question of the owner.
Myself.
Uh, Mr. Katz was here, so maybe he can answer that question.
Yeah, we're not up first. Uh. I'll take it this first, and then, um, we have been getting my staff right there.
I'm sorry, can you move closer to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I've been finishing everything like that, um, yeah, I, I built the entire place myself, um, I've had exact meetings, uh. Work with staff to get letting house services on the tight version myself, but we're not.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any questions for the public?
I'm sorry, what we do to, we.
Thank you.
Mr. Nassif, you mentioned everybody's review letter after mine, do not get mine? I'm not seeing every kind of letter.
It was sent, it was sent to the lawyer and applicant.
Real quick, we only, if anyone, Mr. Warner put Karen on one of the comments, I will have.
Mr. Warner didn't have your report, so he got lucky, but please, what's the date of that report?
Uh, October second.
And two?
Right, the first comment, there is a discrepancy on the plan sheet A O, A zero states the. Floor area is twenty-eight seventy-five, but the parking requirement is based on twenty-three seventy-five.
Twenty-three seventy-five, okay.
So he'll revise sheet A zero to be twenty-three.
Seventy-five, yes, alright.
The second one is, if there's any work outside the building, the front, Milburn Avenue was any road, any work with in front of the building. Needs to be coordinated with the county.
Understood, um, the only work is the improved sign.
Okay. Um, we made a recommendation, consideration for the board for a bike rack. It is a fitness center, um, you know, to put a bike rack there in case somebody would like to ride their bike. And and have a place to put it, recommendation for the board to consider. Um, and the last is, um, there is a change in use. Um. We don't have any, I've got some numbers here, uh, we asked for, you know, water and sewer demand calculations comparing. It's prior use as a retail center and now as a fitness center, uh, that's all we asked for.
Okay, um, with regards to water and sewer, I. Not sure, would you more? Ah, that's right, it's not a change in use, we've got this office, it was previously occupied as a professional office. Okay. I think there are.
Office. But less bodies per.
Okay, yeah.
So we just said, you know.
Didn't seem that there would be.
When you, when you find our review letter, just respond, um, and say it's nominal or whatever, provides some backup. Office and retail has the same water and sewage demands based upon applicable codes. Fitness center is gonna be based on something.
I'm sorry, fitness center is based on?
Um. I don't, it it's based on occupancy, it's based on number of members. Off the top of my head, I, I really don't remember.
Unless I do.
But it's in the code, it it it, a fitness, called a fitness center because it's not. A retail store, it's not an office, it's, you know.
Not to be too granular, though, it's also not, it's a private, it is a club, which is not going to the public, which has significantly less demand, so what I, what I can offer. Is as a condition, we can have a provided response.
That's to you?
That's all of one of our, one of the folks on our civil side?
Yeah.
That's all we're at?
Yeah, that'd be perfect, it's fine.
So, so just so I'm clear, got one through four, four on the change of view, the water sewer, you're gonna, you respond, the number one revision. A O, you're, uh, you're, you're gonna respond, uh, you've confirmed no work on the outside of the sign. And the bike rack was a recommendation, and you'll let us know whether you wanna stipulate the recommendation or not, it's a recommendation, I take it not a. You know, and then the board can decide, uh, if they accept the rec, uh, the stip, or if there is no stipulation to do the bike rack, the board can decide what it wants. So, at this point, I guess, if the question is, is bike rack or no bike rack, it's not required of the recommendation. That's for the applicant. Who's sitting next to his attorney, and they discuss that while we move on.
The uh. Mr. Pedo, are, are you done with your questions, Chris Keller?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Pedo, any questions?
I have no further questions.
Actually, I have a question for Mr. Keller, uh.
Yes.
Where would, where would he locate that bike rack, do you think? Or could you?
If, if, the bike rack would have to be parallel to the building face, so that when somebody put their bike there, it wouldn't block the whole sidewalk. Um, there's very simple, um, bike racks, it's basic, basically an upside down U, um, and. Uh, their choice, left side of the building, right side of the building, obviously not in front of the doors. I, I, I don't, you know, unfortunately, this plan doesn't really give me an idea of what's next to it, if there's a doorway right next to one side. You know, if they're willing to do this, you know, it would be a placement, you know, so that it doesn't be pedestrian flow to the neighbors or along the sidewalk itself.
Uh, thank you, uh, I, I like the idea, I just didn't know exactly how it would work and how big, but what it should look like for just the U or. For the entire six bike.
It, it, you know, it's about, it makes it intrude into the, yeah, yeah.
It could be, yeah, or talk to landlord, maybe putting it on the end of the block, I know there's some, some space on one side, so it is possible, I think it's a great idea of a fitness area, so.
I would ride my bike there as well.
Fitness center, people can, and especially because we don't have enough parking, so people can bike.
Yeah.
It's a trio, no parking.
Understood.
Now they can bike it.
Understood, agreed, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I, if I can offer. You're correct, you know, the. A perpendicular, uh, no zen bike rack would not work into the width of the, simply your own ordinances and standards, with that, uh. Sidewalk, um. And think possibly at the far end or the other end of the building, and also as a practical matter, Mr. Katz, I discussed that with the landlord. Not a condition of his lease, so it would be a decision by, by the property owner, not by the tenant. Um, but under due consideration, that's a conversation that we would be more than willing to have with the, the owner of the building itself.
Thank you. Sure.
Mr. Warner? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just, just as a procedural matter, there were, uh, quite a number of waivers from the completeness checklist, all of which were recommended. Uh, by our planner based upon, uh, the fact that it's just, I suspect just a change of use, and that's why, uh, so just as a formality, if we could have a motion second and, uh, all in favor to, uh. Uh, grant all the checklist waivers, uh, per the recommendation of our planner?
I'd like a motion to waive all of the waivers on the checklist, as they're made by our planner, but a second?
I'll stick.
On the. All in favor?
Alright, okay.
And opposed?
Yes, uh, the second, but you're testifying as a planner, um, there's one variance. Uh, parking spaces, zero provided versus fourteen required because there's no on-site parking. Um, I don't wanna steal any kinder, but I assume the planning basis is C one undue hardship, and maybe you can. Opine and testify to that in support of the variance?
Sure, uh, that is correct. Um. I'll offer just a simple positive negative criteria, branding variance supports the purposes of zoning. By encouraging, excuse me, encouraging permitted commercial activity, contributing to the vitality and economic. Health and well-being of the community of Milburn Avenue, and hence the upper Milburn Avenue Commercial District, reports with zoning ordinance, uh. Uh. Proposed, uh, uh, standards, and also provides for small-scale commercial activity serving the needs of residents in the surrounding area and components. With the stated purpose and intent, the B three neighborhood zoning district. I'd also submit that there's no substantial detriment to the public good as the use is consistent with the surrounding businesses relies on the same shared parking framework. The application generates a modest controlled parking demand due to its membership-based model. There's no substantial impairment to the intent, purpose, zoning ordinance, zone plan, and it's fully consistent with. Master plan and the redevelopment report in twenty eighteen.
If I may, I think, I heard the negative criteria, I heard the positive criteria, the positive criteria sounded awfully C two. As opposed to C one to me, I assume then, uh, that. You're also arguing a C one with respect to the fact that, that there's no available parking, and therefore, it will be an undue hardship, I assume to, uh. Require the applicant to strictly construe the ordinance and have fourteen parking spaces when there are no, there is no available. Location for any parking spaces, would that be correct?
That is my submission to the board.
Okay, so you're submitting just on the C one and C two criteria?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, just. Or we finish up, I, I have another question, but about a different idea, um. Would the applicant consider putting a bike rack inside?
Um. Uh, interfering in front of the, uh, personal training.
Yeah, I mean, I could try, we don't have too much space, like, you know, very, like, just in terms of, like. I'm trying to, you know, put a lot of things in, like, I guess, twenty-four hundred square meters, like, gym area. Um, I could try, I could see how that would work, I, I'm just, depends on the big of the bike rack actually being now, it also cleanliness as well, it places outside, and then the door is a little small and people actually would bite like inside, so it's a little skinny, and probably.
It would, it would be tricky to navigate, the weather is, you know, now we're in, just looking for all hazards and people in weather. Uh, I've heard, my professional recommendation is that, uh, Mr. Katz, be the building owner and see if it's not, uh, an amenable solution and that also doesn't violate, um, ordinances, uh, the township. Um, it should also be a mutually beneficial thing to all the tenants in the building, not just, uh, Mr. Katz's built operation.
Agreed, potentially if there's an alleyway in the back that doesn't interfere with the neighbors and stuff like that.
There, there is an alleyway courtyard where we're, we rest, is, that is actually a pretty good idea.
Yeah, that's definitely better, there is one, there is one about, like, it's like.
Uh huh.
Yeah, there's like three, there's a couple of, uh, businesses, two and for three, and then there's an alleyway and it's swinging up. The box in place and, uh, the new.
Right, so just, just ideas.
Yeah, that one, I thought I said that, yeah, I know that would say.
Yeah. Not until you hit a point, but to have any substantial can't envision just inside my mind more than accommodating a couple of bicycles in front elevation without interfering with the traveling of the, of the sidewalk. So it's either far into the building or there is an alley courtyard in the rear, uh, of the building, so that actually could be a pretty good solution.
Our recommendation was only for a single, you know, upside down U, which would accommodate two bicycles.
That, and that could certainly be accommodated on one side or the other, yeah. I'm sorry, I'm missing, I'm also misinterpreted, uh, but thank you for that clarification.
Alright, thank you. Public comment.
Yeah.
Questions?
Yep.
Are there any questions for the public?
Yes.
Mr. Pedo? And questions, not kind of, no, the question, okay.
Um, we have one other, uh, individual, after, so.
Sure. Um, my questions are really toward professional and to the applicant. If you look at the two reports, the engineers was dated October 2nd and the plan, our planners was dated October 8th. If you look at it, talks about there'll be no changes to external. Reports are silent as to internal alterations. I believe we've heard testimony that the party use was an offense. And I don't think, and based on Jorge's comment with canoe brook, I apologize, maybe I should be sworn in, I don't.
Well, are, are you about, are you asking?
The question, the question is, is it our experts' um, representation and the applicant representations that there will be no, or there will have, happen, or there will be no alterations, interior alterations? Whereas the reports only talk about exterior. And based on Jorge's comments, how would, if interior alteration been made prior without any permits? This is an enforcement issue that you raised before, I would like to know whether our experts visited the site and they can testify based on the reports, whether they notice, uh, noticed any interior alterations or modifications, because the reports only talk about exterior, or are there any interior alterations or modifications since the submission of the application, which was the, um, representations were all, uh, June twenty eighth, the application is dated, uh, seven thirty and was deemed completed on its nine thirteen and the reports are in October. And I think that we need a factual representation, which is a larger issues going on in town, whether, um, alternate, uh, interior alterations were done, if they were done, were they done with permits? And that enforcement, that, that, whether the engineer or the planner goes something considerable, thank you.
So that's immigration, right?
Yeah, it's like, yes, the application engineers.
I don't think that's for this body to.
As, as a planning board, interior modifications are the purview of the building department. We don't comment on interior renovations or anything because that's not a planning action. So what happens inside the building is a responsibility of the township building department, not this board or Mr. Pedo or myself, um, as your technical advisor.
And so if somebody has a, if I may, somebody has a question or concern with respect to something, uh, that someone perceived should or should not have been done vis a vis the, uh, uh, from an administration standpoint, uh, this is the wrong place. Uh, uh, so that question could be posed to, uh, somebody at town hall between nine to five, I guess, Monday to Friday or whatever.
I thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
That means that we do have the owner here.
Surely the owner can speak to what was done and whether they got permits, sure.
That would be helpful, I think I'd like to know the answer to that because if we had a problem with town hall construction and official and whatnot, um, while it would have no bearing on this particular applicant's approval, uh, I think since the question was asked, it would be nice if we had answered.
That's from the applicant, whether it's the applicant or someone on behalf of the applicant. Yeah, so, um, so Mr. Katz, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Katz, retaining our office for planning and architectural services. Architectural team, as of today, has not determined that any of the interior improvements that he's proposing necessitate a permit. Um, putting gym mats down, painting the walls, changing out light bulbs and assembling gym equipment will necessitate, necessitate construction company. Um, so as of now, bathrooms as they exist remain, uh, everything is as it remains other than any rubber or composite born, mirrors on the walls, paint and light fixtures, which, none of which necessitates, uh, a building permit. Thank you.
Any other questions from the public? Alright, are there comments from the public?
Well, I think, sorry, did you say this is a third witness or not a third?
No, no, no.
You said this.
Just myself, I, I.
Public comment.
Okay, I apologize, I didn't travel up on the night, then we're up.
Yeah.
Alright, public comment. Let's go.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, my name is Steve Rillo, I'm the executive director of the Town Special Improvement District, it's for Milburn Short Hills. Um, Mr. Katz asked me to come here tonight to, to speak.
Has he been sworn? Yeah, yeah, he's gonna be, he's gonna be, the, the business address first, please?
Business address is Milburn Town Hall, twenty two East Road Street, Milburn, New Jersey.
Um, please raise your right hand, because we're at public comment now.
So it's sworn, I swear in people during public comment?
Not only normally, it's, 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 it's legally required, always.
I, I would actually like to offer, um, an answer to Mr. Keller's question about.
You can do that as well, I agree. So certainly you could, you could speak anything relevant to once you're sworn in, do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please proceed.
Uh, before I enter my very brief comments, um, about the economic development and the importance of this project, um, there, the way the building is situated, it actually protrudes out from the building on the right, uh, which is the last studio. It's maybe five feet or so, um, but if you did put in a, um, a bollard to utilize for bike parking, you could park a bicycle in that little alcove, um, so it's just a matter of how the building is shaped, but the building does protrude out, um, from the other building, so it's possible. Um, and I'm certainly, uh, now that I'm sworn in, if there are any questions that the board has for me in my professional capacity, I have to answer. Um, so as an executive director of the improvement district, I have the pleasure of representing over five hundred and twenty businesses in five commercial districts, including Upper Milburn Avenue, uh, this is where Mr. Katz's business is located. I'm here this evening to stress my strong support for his application, and I respectfully request your approval. I've been working with Mr. Katz on various aspects of his onboarding process over the past five months, and I think that his business will be an excellent addition to the Upper Milburn Avenue District. For purpose of context, Upper Milburn Avenue is the second smallest of our five bid sub-districts. It's home to forty six businesses, which is just about under nine percent of total in bid. It features a diverse mix of professional offices, salons, beauty and fitness studios, as well as children's enrichment businesses and a variety of retail stores. Um, it is, it's a very diverse sub-district. Um, and as we think about this application and the future of this corridor, it's important to note that in June of twenty twenty, the commercial vacancy rate on Upper Milburn Avenue was twenty three percent. Since then, it has declined more than any other district to ten percent, thanks in part to a combination of the new development at the Metropolitan, cohesive marketing, branding and events, and investment by entrepreneurs who have opened no less than sixteen new stores since twenty twenty, and we hope that Mr. Katz will be number seventeen. And while the district has many strengths, it faces many challenges as well. The ten percent commercial vacancy rate is the highest in the five bid districts, compared to four point six across the entire district and two point eight percent in the downtown, and this is exacerbated by a number of white elephant properties which owners have not made efforts to improve or lease. There's also physical challenges, including limited parking. Therefore, we must support the applicants that come before us and recognize that they're part of a larger effort to continue to support the vitality and growth of Upper Milburn Avenue. Mr. Katz is a young, energetic entrepreneur with an established and loyal customer base, eager to see him open a brick and mortar location. He's already demonstrated strong community engagement through his participation in Explorer Milburn Short Hills events and by building relationships with his neighboring businesses, many of whom have expressed enthusiasm for the foot traffic and complementary activity that his gym will bring. We want Mr. Katz's customers from outside of Milburn Short Hills to visit his gym and decide to get their next haircut at Janelle Salon or buy a new suit at Enzo Customs Shoes just opened, grab a smoothie at Taste Buddy, just celebrated their fourth anniversary, or enroll their kids in the programs at Coder School or Tiger Shoalman. Upper Milburn Avenue has amazing potential, and I believe that Mr. Katz will be a part of advancing that effort. Thank you for your time, Mr. Katz. Thank you.
Have one question, Christine?
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna make a fun video if, if the application passes?
Depends what.
Are you, are we gonna see you in like a, a one-on-one fitness kind of thing?
I have no idea what you're talking about, I never do funny videos of any costumes or anything like that. Um, yes, absolutely, and, uh, we will have a great grand opening celebration and, uh, it'll be a wonderful opportunity, uh, to, to celebrate Chris's accomplishments. Thank you.
My comment is, my.
Yeah. You swear to God or affirm testimony about to give us the truth, all the truth and nothing but the truth?
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Bell, uh, living in Alexander Lake, Shore Hills, New Jersey. Um, the public comment is about parking irons, it's an issue that we've been having on Upper Milburn Avenue. People get approvals from various boards as to getting permits and there's no enforcement, but there's been a representation that they would buy permits for certain employees that you make that, put that in specific number and it's done um, for them, they'll be monitored, thank you.
And I did understand that to be, if I may, Mr. Chairman, a, a stipulated to condition by, or, or part of the project in S, but it would. So it was there a, uh, quantification of the number of permits, uh, I think there was a quantification of the number of employees.
And may I speak to that, just to answer the question?
With the chair's permission, anyone can speak.
Okay, um, so, um, I, I understand Mr. Bell's comment and, and he's right, but to quantify it doesn't necessarily, to quantify a number of parking passes doesn't reflect the process that our parking passes are issued in, so we have, um, transferable passes where three license plates can be assigned to one pass, so in theory, if three people work on three different days, you would get one pass for those three vehicles, you can also get the full permanent pass for one vehicle, so to stipulate that a specific number of passes needs to be issued, doesn't correlate with the way that we do it, you'd have to figure out its number of employees or it's something, it, you can't quantify that there has to be a specific number of passes because transferable passes and full-time passes, the numbers wouldn't add up. Does that make sense?
Candidly, it sounds like it's something that can be accomplished, um, the, the, uh, whether, whether it's simply, uh, all employees at any given time will be subject to or, or have an entitlement to a pass, uh, uh, or whether it's an actual number that covers, uh, uh, well, the employees that are proposed to be at the site, I think, I think it's achievable.
Well, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just, the, the verb is important, right, quantify.
Uh, and I'll.
Quantify would mean that you have a specific number.
Someone can give us the, what the commitment is and we can put it in the resolution. Okay, then someone would have to be the applicant. Um, okay. There. Just needs to be figured out and, and explained.
Anyone who is working at the time will be provided with parking passes. That could be two people, three, there's not more than three at once, but.
So all employees will be covered by a parking permit or pass, whatever it is, yeah. Okay, thank you.
And we'll, we'll add the location.
Okay. Are there any other more, other thing, heard the comments from the public?
Do you wanna hear from his grandmother?
Yeah, I would like to speak to you.
You can't say no if his grandmother comes up.
The, uh. Sure, yes, please provide for the summation for your, for your, for the applicant.
Hey, unless the board or has any other questions for the applicant or any other comments, we respectfully request your consideration and approval of the areas presented, for confident misuse fits well within the existing neighborhood context and will bring positive energy and vitality to the commercial corridor without any substantial detriment to the public good, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Warner, could you provide us the summation?
I'll do my best.
Possible motion.
I have a preliminary final site plan approval and one bulk variance for number of parking spaces, fourteen required, zero proposed, uh, given no onsite parking, you had, or, uh, planning testimony with respect to a potential C one and or C two uh, basis for the relief, uh, of, uh, the stipulated two conditions were as testified to, uh, the four items, uh, on our, at our engineers' report dated October 2nd.
It was.
Uh, as well as the items in our plan that's reported dated October 8th. And I do not believe there were any other reports, I didn't receive any, um, the, uh, and the part other conditions. Uh, we have, I'll call it the all employee will be covered by parking permit, the passes uh, condition approval that was stipulated by the applicant, uh, in addition to those items in the two reports I mentioned. And I don't believe I have any other stipulated to conditions. So if it is a motion to, if it is a motion to approve, I'll assume it's for that relief with all those, uh, conditions.
And they like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Please have a roll call voted.
Jorge Billar?
Yes.
Jorge Master Petro?
Yes.
Debra Naves?
Yes.
Frank Sacamandi?
Yes.
Michael Zion?
Yes.
Jonathan Baxter?
Yes.
Strini Bijay?
Yes.
Eric Gaston?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and good luck. Alright, I, I think that wraps up the night's agenda. Yeah, the motion is adjourned. Second, second, all in favor?
Alright.
And all opposed? Motion passed again. First rule, there's a motion.
I, I know, I was thinking about it like.
Take care. You need to take that break.
No, never do.